Good evening, everyone. The February 18th, 2020 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Hare will lead.
May we all be thankful for this day that we have been given, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. May we have strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always and to work with a combination of compassion and thoughtfulness.
The pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission is asked, I advise you, that under certain circumstances members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reaver Road.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We have two individuals signed up for invitation to audience, Ms. Latoya Nekongolo and Mr. Bobby Jackson. If you will please come forward and take a seat. State your name and address for the record. As I stated, you will have two minutes.
Latoya Nekongolo, 268 North Drive, Severna Park, Maryland. Thank you, councilmembers. I'd especially like to thank Councilman Volkey for bringing suicide to the public's attention in last month's meeting. There are approximately 2,500 mental health and addiction providers across the state of Maryland with 383 outpatient mental health providers practicing here in Anarundel County. Approximately 16,000 Anarundel County residents are receiving mental health and addiction services, but the state of Maryland has created a crisis across the entire behavioral health system. As of January 1st, 2020, the state switched from Beacon to Optum for billing of all behavioral health services, causing hardships on providers who accept patients with Medicaid. The Optum system is completely dysfunctional, which has led to providers being underpaid by thousands or not being paid at all. Medicaid recipients are not able to book new patient appointments because most providers are seeing their existing patients pro bono. Programs are at risk of closing and new providers are not able to enroll into the Medicaid system. The state of Maryland and Optum are unable to give a concrete date as to when this matter will be resolved, and their temporary solution will negatively affect organizations for months to come. The CEO of Optum released a statement, and I quote, "While we have heard positive comments about the efficiency of our system, we have also received constructive feedback that will help us to improve." The arrogance of the CEO to tell this blatant lie is baffling. The state of Maryland is in breach of contract because providers are not being paid accurately for services rendered, and that is illegal. We need to fix this train wreck of a system immediately, and we ask that you advocate for us by, one, submitting a formal inquiry to the state, as well as, two, appoint the Health Officer and Executive Director of the Mental Health Agency to submit a formal inquiry to the state to demand a resolution. To date, most local providers have not received any correspondence from the Department of Health or Mental Health Agency regarding this issue. We ask that the state bring back Beacon until the Optum system is fully functionable. If this problem isn't fixed, you will continue to see an uptick in suicide and overdose numbers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson?
I own two towing companies in Anarundel County, and I'm trying to get something changed on the way the county police call for a tow truck, the licensed tower. Everybody else in all other counties has heavy-duty towing and have light-duty towing. For instance, last night in Edgewood, a lady, 20 years old, went underneath of a truck and trailer, and it killed her, but we had to lift the truck off of the car to get her body out. Anarundel County had to call three different towers that couldn't handle the job before they got to the person that has the equipment to do the job. And that's what I'm trying to get changed to where, like, state police call, when they have a truck wreck, they call heavy-duty towers that are licensed with the state, and then they call light-duty towers for cars. Anarundel County is the only one that calls everybody else first to see if they can handle it, instead of just calling the right ones. It's 12 zones in Anarundel County, and it's 22 towers, and five towers have heavy duty. So that means they could call 10 different towers to find out whether they could handle it or not, when it could be somebody trapped in a car that a truck's laying on, that it could be any of our loved ones, and it takes time for them to make phone calls for these towers that don't have the equipment to say they can't handle it. And I have Traffic Safety, which is in charge of all the fadals and everything for Anarundel County, the Traffic Safety Police. They support this 100 percent. Their officers are standing on the side of the road, waiting for the right company to bring the right equipment out there to do the job, and it's not happening. The bill or whatever just has to be changed to where they call heavy duties when it's a truck, they call light duty when it's a car.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So what do I do now?
You sit.
Oh. I ain't never done this before.
Good job. Thank you very much. I think many of us were taking notes. If there's anyone who did not sign up and who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record.
My own? Okay. Jessica Ying, 2417 Fox Creek Lane, Davidsonville. I'm going to read you two direct quotes, the first of which comes from the last council meeting, and the second is from an email while engaging in public policy. Quote one, quote, "This bill was first introduced on November 18th, and we have been discussing this bill, and the influx of amendments this evening are extremely frustrating, and they don't give anyone the amount of time to really digest what we're voting on. This bill comes up to a vote next week or next week, and if there seems to be problems with this bill that passes, if it does, there's a chance to amend the public policy later. Personal privilege there is the chair. Can we move on with this amendment?" End quote. Tonight, I'm going to use my personal privilege as a citizen to point out how woefully disrespectful that is to the people who take time to come out and testify, and to the councilmembers we elect to represent us. After hearing from us or further considering implications of a piece of legislation, it would be a violation of their duty to their elected districts not to address those issues. So you are welcome to be annoyed by it or feel as though they should just trust you to correct bad legislation after it is passed. But in my opinion, trusting your government once they successfully gain what they want is always a terrible idea. So thank you to those of you who take your duty seriously." The next quote comes from an email, quote, "I hope you understand my frustration, hearing a flurry of concerns that have already been debated after the window to amend the bill has come and gone, and roughly 24 hours before the bill comes up for a final vote."
Ma'am, ma'am, this is related to Bill 8919, which is on the agenda?
No, it is not on the agenda. This is not related to that bill, if you're listening to my comments, and my time's being taken up now. Before the final comes up for a vote, yes, the legislative process depends on citizen engagement, but it depends on timely engagement. I guess I am to infer from this statement that anyone here tonight for hearing on a bill for any final vote is wasting their time, because our engagement isn't timely. I guess I am mistaken that there's a public hearing, that there is a public hearing that is still timely engagement. Perhaps you should have the rules rewritten to reflect your opinion, but until then, our voices should be respected, heard, and acted upon when necessary.
Thank you.
You took up a few seconds of my time. I had exactly 1 minute and 58 seconds on this, so I should be able to finish.
You have 10 seconds, ma'am.
When you are outdoor knocking for votes and doing row vote calls weeks or days before voting, perhaps your voter should remind you that you had years to engage in a timely manner with them and vote for someone else.
Seeing no other movement in the audience, the invitation to audience is now closed.
I'm Trenzle.
Yeah, oh, oh, excuse me. I didn't see you. I'm so sorry.
Gee, I must have gotten a bit up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm really not supposed to be here, because I did manage to break some, break a bone and now I've got a concussion, but when you're trapped, you know, at home, you get stir-crazy, and then you just can't stay away. Tonight, I want to acknowledge a very important event in U.S. history. This is the 75th anniversary of the Battle of Iwo Jima. It was a battle that went on for 30 days. Our Air Force bombed this little tiny island for 77 days. The Japanese had no surprise that the Americans were going to invade. They had 25,000 defenders of this island. They knew that they were going to fight to the death, because they were protecting the gateway to their homeland islands. And the U.S. Marine Corps had estimated that the little loss would be 1 in 3 Marines. That is a 33 percent loss. And yet, these brave and courageous men, yay, sacrificed. And one of the great privileges of my life was I had the opportunity to meet Jack Lucas, who was one of the 27 Medal of Honor winners. He was a young guy. He jumped on a live grenade that had been thrown into the center of his group, and of course, went off. And he was seriously wounded, but he survived, and quite a delightful gentleman. And in his late years, he and some of the other surviving Medal of Honor winners were going to schools to teach the kids about this horrendous battle, about how much this nation sacrificed, how many people just went right down to the recruiters to sign up to protect our country. And I wonder now, in this divided society that we have, how many people would be willing to put their lives on the line to fight together to protect us as a society and as a country?
Thank you. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any councilmember would like to place on the agenda at this time? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM and opened with Ms. Rodvian reciting song lyrics by Jay Rosenman Johnson and James Wildin Johnson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 3rd, 2020?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The minutes of February 3rd, 2020 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 820, An Ordinance Concerning Lock Haven Special Community Benefit District. Bill Number 920, An Ordinance Concerning 2020 Amendments to the Anarundel County Solid Waste Management Plan, 2013. Bill Number 1020, An Ordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies Commission on Disability Issues. Bill Number 1120, An Ordinance Concerning Public Safety Speed Monitoring Systems. Bill Number 1220, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, Workforce Housing. Bill Number 1320, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget and Zoning, Commercial Revitalization Area Program Designation of a Commercial Revitalization Area in Herrendale and Glenbernie, Maryland. Bill Number 1420, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget and Zoning, Commercial Revitalization Area Program Designation of a Commercial Revitalization Area in Marley and Glenbernie, Maryland. Bill Number 1520, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Road Facilities, Impact Areas, Peninsula, and Other Areas. Bill Number 1620, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Residential Districts, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities 1 and 2, Group Homes 1 and 2, Recovery Residences 1 and 2, and Rooming Houses.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 520, Resolution Approving the Appointments of Members to the Severn River Commission. Resolution Number 620, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Members of the Classified Service to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County. Resolution Number 720, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Residents of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County. Resolution Number 820, Resolution Honoring Detective Scott Ballard and Detective Ian Priest of the Anarundel County Police Department.
May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 820 first this evening?
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary, will you call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
To vote on Resolution Number 820.
To vote on Resolution Number 820 this evening.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 820 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 820.
Resolution Number 820, Resolution Honoring Detective Scott Ballard and Detective Ian Priest of the Anarundel County Police Department.
This resolution is sponsored by the entire council. Introduced by Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so again, this is, although I'm reading it, this is on behalf of all of my colleagues, and I know that we all share in these sentiments as I read them. Again, Resolution Honoring Detective Scott Ballard and Detective Ian Priest of the Anarundel County Police Department. Whereas on February 5th, 2020, Detective Scott Ballard and Detective Ian Priest of the Anarundel County Police Department were shot and seriously injured in the line of duty in the while in pursuit of an armed and dangerous suspect wanted in connection with the murder of another man. And whereas Detective Ballard and Detective Priest demonstrated heroism, immeasurable commitment, and care in the exercise of their duties as protectors of the public and their fellow officers. And whereas the county council is deeply proud of Detective Ballard and Detective Priest, who made extreme sacrifices in order to protect citizens and secure our safety, and sends their highest tribute to the service of these two law enforcement officers. And whereas the county council further expresses profound sympathy and gratitude to the family, fellow officers, friends, and loved ones of Detective Ballard and Detective Priest. And whereas the county council also wishes to recognize the heroism and bravery shown by each and every loyal man and woman who devote themselves to the safety and security of the county every day, now therefore be it, resolved by the Anarundel County Council, that it hereby expresses infinite gratitude to Detective Scott Ballard and Detective Ian Priest for their service to the Anarundel County, and wishes them and their families swift recoveries. And be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be sent to Stuart Pittman County Executive and Timothy J. Altamore, Chief of Police. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 820.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Strong aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 820 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8919 as amended.
Bill Number 8919, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Zoning, Short-Term Residential Rentals.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your bill, as the admin comes forward.
Thank you. We've discussed this bill at pretty great length over the last few months, and I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the people that have put in effort and worked towards getting this bill to a stage where it is tonight. We've had members of the Office of Law, Planning and Zoning, Office of Finance, inspections and permits. We've had many people come and testify and give feedback that has made this bill stronger. I've heard concerns from my colleagues, and I'm really grateful for all the work that people have put in up to this point, and glad that we have what I believe is a strong bill at this point.
Would the administration like to weigh in?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table from Office of Planning and Zoning is Ms. Lori Rhodes, from IMP, The Bills, Bill Bryant and Bill Deck, and from Office of Law, Lori Blair Klausmeyer. We are happy to answer any further questions. As the sponsor noted, this bill has been discussed at length. While no bill is perfect, the administration supports this bill.
Do I have any questions? Mr. Pruski?
Madam Chair, I did have a few folks reach out to me, and I'm not sure on the administration, and I'm not going to rehash the conversation, but I did want to put something on the record. We did talk about setting the fee based upon what was said last time. Would the auditor or the administration adjust that fee based upon staffing once that number is figured out? So say, for instance, we set it at 400, we realize it really should be at 300, because that's the cost. I just want to be clear to everyone, when does that occur, or how would that occur? Through the budgeting process?
Yeah. We would know how much it costs when we do our budget, but I believe we're putting the amounts in statute, so we would have to come back with a new bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate what I stated in our last meeting on this bill, is that I'm committed to reviewing the fee. Obviously, when we're dealing with a new area of legislation, we may not have the exact figures. We have to make our best estimates based on the best information that we have available. And so, after we have actual numbers that can indicate what the cost of administering this bill will actually be, we will go back and review and see if the fee is appropriate and needs to be adjusted up or down. And I have committed to doing that once we have a significant amount of actual data that we can determine if our fee, if we hit the mark, or if we hit it too high or hit it too low, to make sure it's at the appropriate level.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question. So based on the numbers that we've received, it looks like, in terms of the jurisdictions that folks have sent to us, we may be on the high end of what jurisdictions are charging in terms of this fee. I saw something, I think New York City, their fee on this is like $250. So we're obviously a substantial amount greater than that. In the event, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rodvian, you wanted to add?
I just want to correct, make sure the facts are clear, that the $400 covers a two-year period, so ours is actually 200 per year. So we're lower than New York City.
We're a little lower than that. Okay, perfect. Thank you. In the event that we find in the budgeting process and reviewing this, that we have folks who have overpaid for this, are we going to issue some sort of a refund for the overpayment or say to people, you know, we recognize that this was too much, and we're now going to send that back? I understand the commitment to reviewing the fee, but I just want to make sure that we've got an equal commitment to those paying it, that if we find the actual costs are too high, that we may be looking at trying to get that back to them.
That would be something we would have to look at at that time, but the administration is pretty confident, as confident as you can be at this stage of implementing a new policy, that our fee is reasonable and just.
Okay. Thanks.
Seeing no, oh, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I received a letter from Airbnb, actually, and I think everyone may have received the same letter. I don't know if the administration received it or not.
I have not seen it.
Okay. I'm happy to share it with you. They have flagged some concerns about the verification requirements, the host registration number listing requirements, and the notice and take-down in this bill. And I'm just curious if anyone, I thought you all had reached out to them, or I'm just not sure if anybody has any comments about that, or has worked with Airbnb on this, or what, because they seem to be saying that there are some violations of the Communications Decency Act and whatnot with respect to the timeframes in the bill.
It's hard to react to something I haven't seen.
So you didn't, the administration didn't receive this? Okay. Has Office of Law seen this?
We have seen it. Ms. Kenny in my office took a look at it, and I think she provides some information to Ms. She was nodding her head. I didn't know if it went to you or to Ms. Pickard. We don't feel that there are violations based on kind of the infancy of the law in this. It's still, you know, a new area of law that's being explored, but the preliminary cases, which are mostly based on preliminary injunctions, are that the things in our statute would not violate. That particular provision deals with content-based responsibility of the host, the website host, for content, not necessarily restrictions dealing with registration and the inability to rent to a non-registered host.
This talks specifically about that content, about listing the registration number specifically?
The requirement to list the registration number may or may not be content. We feel that it's not a violation based on what we've looked at.
Okay. And what about the verification?
I mean, the answer is true, is that we're probably going after the host, the homeowner host, as opposed to Airbnb for a violation of not properly listing a registration or being registered.
Okay. What about the verification requirements? Same thing, it talks about that you're saying is not an issue?
Not a violation. Right.
Okay. And the three days to take down a listing?
That's a policy call as far as timing. They say that that's not a reasonable time. Legally, I don't have anything to say about that one way or the other.
Okay. Do you have an opinion about the fact that it doesn't allow hosts an opportunity to cure?
Again, that's a policy call.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions from my colleagues, we'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. If anybody has decided they'd like to come forward. Oh, we've got some folks. Thank you, administration. If you could come forward and sit in the seats. We're going to start here. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Good? Oh, perfect. Thank you. My name is Susan Margulies. I live at 113 Conduit Street. I'm also the admin for the Facebook group Support Annapolis STVR, and within that community, I advocate for people that just rent rooms in their homes. We call ourselves Little Airbnb. By and large, we are delighted with the bill and the care and thought that you've put into the registration process. But I do want to comment about the fee, the $400 for two years fee. Completely recognize, again, the thoughtfulness and care that the administration has put into this. From the host's perspective, it is my opinion, just my opinion, that it's vital, that the perception that goes out into the community is that this registration process is friendly and easy and fair. And if that perception, that immediate perception, is what filters out into the community, that attitude is going to stick, and the registration process will be a success. And from the host's perspective, I'd like you to just imagine, you have proof of short-term rental insurance, which is in your name, you have a home that's in your name, you have a driver's license with that address on it, and of course, you hold a homestead exemption. It's going to be hard for that host to understand why it might take $400 to process that application. So again, I greatly appreciate the thought and care that you've put into this, and I completely recognize the willingness to revisit that fee. But just a reminder that it's the perception, I think, my opinion, just an opinion, that it's the perception of fairness and ease of use that will make this registration policy, brand-new policy, a success, especially when you're talking about registering homes that people own, and then you become registering people.
Thank you. Mr. Riddle?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Brian Riddle. I have resided 2417 Fox Creek Lane in Davidsonville. I have a lot of struggles with Bill 8919, as I shared in the last meeting. Regulation and intent in this bill, from what I can arrive at, is registration of hoes, which I understand only creates a list and generates a fee to establish a mechanism to help enforce the taxation. The second thing this bill achieves is to restrict the ownership of rentals, and I really struggle with what the intent of that is and what that does to benefit the residents of this county. The real issues, as I perceive them, are parking, rentals used as an event venue, safety noise, and just the general nuisance that Airbnbs bring. The fee, the arbitrary fee, which has no basis that I can arrive at, is a $200 annual fee that, based on my research, produces $220,000 of revenue for Anarundel County. What's the basis? And how's this fee going to be used? How is it calculated? And what do you all intend to do with the windfall? $220,000 is a lot of money from the taxpayers of this county. The basic issue with this legislation is the fact that it's admittedly half-baked, poorly vetted, and will require follow-up legislation to address the errors and deficiencies. This is not responsible, and it's my opinion, the bill should be defeated, and a workgroup should...
It has been alleged through my engagement in this public policy discussion, that I am unhappy with the bill, that no piece of legislation will please everyone. My concerns about this bill are not a matter of liking the bill, it's a matter of deficiencies in the bill and possibilities of opening the county up to expensive litigation due to those deficiencies. I have raised concerns via email about the lack of a grandfather clause and the implications on homeowners. The fee, which is, in my opinion, is currently arbitrary, based on extensive research I've done in other, much more expensive areas of the U.S., which I presented in detail. A concern about the actual number of people who would be registering, which is the basis of implementing the tax. The conflicting statements from the county about absorbing the cost with current staff or not. The lack of a fine if there is a violation, as others across the country have, and the fact that it does nothing to address nuisance short-term rentals at all. The nuisance short-term rental concern is an area of concern that people in this county can likely support. In our community, we have a short-term rental that not only rents by the night, but has rented it as a wedding venue. Good government policies should aim to protect the character, safety, and use of the residents who live there, not to find new sources of revenue for this county. It has been stated that some are willing to come back to the bill and amend the registration fee after a year or two of data is available. Are you going to refund the excess fee you collected that is over and above covering the cost, along with interest, lost on their money? Do you expect us to trust our government to cut a revenue stream they are receiving? After all, this bill does not state that the registration fee is for the sole purpose of covering the administrative cost. How do you intend to track the cost if it's being absorbed? Finding the proper amount to administrate the registration and raising it, if necessary, is the responsible path forward. This bill fails to address many substantial issues and possibly place the county in expensive litigation or lawsuit settlements. It would benefit the taxpayers of this county to have a better researched bill, rather than passing this one, simply because you're out of time.
Ms. Cheney.
Hi, my name is Anna Cheney of Lothian, Maryland. And I came as I do have concerns about this Bill 8919. I do think it's a very complicated bill. I think that you have put a lot of time and effort into it, and I've heard lots of different perspectives here in this meeting last time, and also in between times. I think it has good intentions. However, it's hard not to feel that there's an intention, almost, to be discriminatory and punitive. The reason it's hard not to feel that way is when you limit someone, or an entity, or entities from owning two properties in this county, that feels extremely discriminatory. I don't even know how that is legal. If someone has chosen over the past decades to invest in Anarondo County properties as their financial plan, or, for example, I have a friend who couldn't afford to stay in their house through a divorce. However, they figured out that if they rented it by short term, they could keep that house and each move into a lower-income housing. And then they realized they could make money that way and take care of their children better. So they have three properties. So why are we going to discriminate against people who have figured out a way to improve property values, the properties themselves, the properties around them, and also to contribute now by paying taxes to the funds of Anarondo County? So we have upstanding citizens who are doing good jobs, being entrepreneurs, figuring out ways to make a living, make it work, have great families in this county, and now we're penalizing them by charging them a $400 fee that they may or may not be able to afford, by requiring them to have a license that requires cumbersome tracking, and to pay taxes now 13% on the sale of an overnight stay, 13%. So 7% of that goes to the Anarondo AACVB, on which I was a board member for about four years. I know that their purpose is to put heads in beds of hotels. So now, we are not only discriminating, but we're penalizing the small business owner, and we're giving privileges to large hotels, because now it's important that we take the 7% from the small guy and we support the big guy. So I ask that you postpone this, and you come back with amendments that make this more appropriate to the purpose. Thank you so much.
Ms. Johnson.
Excuse me. Julie Johnson, POB 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I know you've worked on this, and I know it's a big topic all over the country, but I don't know how many of you have ever lived in a community where you feel that you were invaded. In my case, it was the State Highway Administration who decided to widen Row Boulevard and Route 50. And suddenly, you took, you know, that took away a lot of really nice neighbors. And then what was left, in many cases, were turned into rental properties. And while some of those rental tenants are lovely and delightful people, most of them intend to stay there only a matter of a year or two. They don't feel like they're a part of the community. They don't make any overly serious... I mean, they're friendly. They greet you. You may exchange cookies at Christmas time, or something else. But you don't have that long-term community bond. And when you look at the community of Annapolis and the communities of Anarondo County, like when I first moved into my neighborhood, if you'd only been there for 20 years, you were a newcomer. And many families had been there for 50, 60, 70 years, if not longer. They had deep roots in the community that made them know, and feel, and believe, and be committed to making their community work. And my concern is that as we deliberately bring in people who have no intent of doing anything more than coming here for short term, why should they care if the landlord says, "Oh, it's okay to go park on her property"? Which is what's happened year after year during, you know, the seasons when certain people rent out properties, you know, for football games and other events. It's not that that's the end of the world, but you can understand how that diminishes the positive relationships in communities. So I have deep concerns about all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to do a last call on the public hearing for Bill 8919 as amended. Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing for 8919 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8919 as amended.
Bill Number 8919, An ordinance concerning licenses and registrations zoning short-term residential rentals.
Is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to address a few of the concerns that have been raised. I've addressed them in previous sessions, but in my district, we have entire neighborhoods where you've got multiple short-term rentals. Investors are buying up multiple properties on the same block, and they become absentee landlords. And basically, you no longer have a neighborhood. You're living in a block that's basically a block of hotels, or a block of, you know, basically, people just coming in to stay short term, and you don't have a neighborhood anymore. You don't have the same kind of care that you might have for a homeowner who is taking care of their home, because they live in it every day. We also have an affordable housing crisis in our county. And if we are allowing investors to come in and buy up, or even if we're allowing that to become an ordinary means of doing business in the county, we are exacerbating the affordable housing crisis by pulling more and more pieces of property off the market, when we have over 10,000 people on the waitlist for housing vouchers that are currently living in, you know, shared residences with family members. It's real. And so, this may not be a large step, but limiting it to two short-term rentals, limiting every person to two short-term rentals helps bring that down. That doesn't mean a property owner has no rights with their property. They can do lots of other things with their property. They can rent it out on a long-term basis, which actually would support the concern about affordable housing, if people are actually renting out their properties on a long-term basis. So yes, that is a goal. This is not a revenue-generating bill. I think when we got the estimates, the amount of revenue was not anywhere near 200,000. It was under 100,000. And it basically is, the fee, at least, is revenue-neutral. So we're not, there's not this generation of hundreds of thousands for the county, and there's no intent to do so. In fact, to do so, to do that through a fee, would actually be illegal. And so we've created a fee that really is reflecting the actual costs. My understanding is the Office of Inspection and Permits would require additional personnel to implement the administrative requirements of this bill, and the fee is set, more or less, to cover that cost and a few other items that would be needed to address, you know, to administer this program. So I just wanted to set the record straight on some of the comments that I heard this evening. Again, we'll go back and look. If the fee turns out to be more than the county needed, then we can, you know, we can adjust accordingly. If it turns out to be less, we will adjust accordingly also, because it's not fair to ask taxpayers at large to pay for the administration of a program that benefits specific property owners. So that's why we chose a fee. That's why this isn't being funded, why the administrative duties here aren't being funded out of, you know, general tax dollars. It's being funded through a fee. So with that said, I ask my colleagues to support this bill. And I appreciate the time and effort that everyone has taken to get the bill to the place that it's at, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Did the administration have anything to add to the conversation?
Nope.
Okay, great. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8919 as amended.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pousky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 8919 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 220 as amended.
Bill Number 220, An ordinance concerning public works, roads, and rights of way, obstructions, abandonment of facilities.
This is administration bill, along with Mr. Volkey. Would the administration like to take the lead?
Happy to. Good evening again. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table from DPW is Mr. Phipps and Mr. Beckier, and from law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. We discussed this bill and amended it at the last council meeting, but just to remind everyone, Bill 2-20 is the result of the meeting of the minds between Councilman Volkey and the administration. We were both working on similar pieces of legislation to address the issue of abandoned infrastructure in county right-ofways. So we work together, and why not have one bill, right? So I understand there will be some amendments that will be coming, and we'll discuss them at the appropriate time. The quick recap on this bill, we have had several, the county has had several road projects, including Pasadena Road, Camp St. Clair Road, Sunrise Beach Road, Chesapeake Center Drive, Forest Drive, Maryland 214, 468, I believe we just named every council district, that have suffered delays and disruption due to buried utility conflicts and/or unresponsiveness from the utility companies to remedy these conflicts. This bill is not intended to be a gotcha bill, or a punitive bill, on the utilities we have discussed, and I believe some of the amendments coming forth today will address some of the utility companies' concerns. This bill is intended to make sure that when county taxpayers are spending money for an infrastructure project, that that project is able to move forward in a timely fashion. So with that, we'll discuss the amendments at the appropriate time, but the administration supports this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to tell Mr. Barron, I think we're up to three. This isn't the first bill. I think we're up to three.
It is not.
We will now... Oh, is there any questions from council? I don't see any. So we'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up, so is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Bill Number 220 that did not sign up? Seeing no movement from the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Bill Number 220 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 220 as amended.
Bill Number 220, An ordinance concerning public works, roads, and rights of way, obstructions, abandonment of facilities.
I believe there are three amendments. Mr. Volkey, did you want to start off? Oh, sorry. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment clarifies that the 45-day notice is not issued until after the department determines that the person is not acting promptly and diligently to shift, adjust, accommodate, or remove the obstruction, and requires that the notice be sent by first-class mail and by email, when an email address is available.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, as Mr. Barron said, this is not intended to be a gotcha bill to any of the carriers. This is intended to be a way that, when we get a carrier who's completely unresponsive, this is a last resort that we can use to compel compliance. I've had a chance to talk with the representatives from BGE and Comcast in particular, and I know that this addresses some of their concerns. I don't think that this will be the last round of amendments, so as we go through these, realize that this is still a work in progress, excuse me, and that we are all trying to get to a place where we have a bill that does exactly what we want to do, which is not penalize or beat up on the carriers, or the utility companies for that matter. So the purpose of this particular amendment is to just clarify what I think we all understood at the work session and prior hearings where we discussed this, which is that we're not just sending these 45-day notice letters immediately. This is not a first resort. This is when we get to a place where we now do not have responsiveness from the utilities, that's when we're issuing this. So that's the purpose of this amendment, is to clarify the intention of the county as to how we're going to use these, what I think Councilwoman Hare referred to as cure notices. I think that's effectively what this is.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this amendment?
Administration is fine with this amendment. As Councilman Volkey referenced, it was no one's intention that the provisions in this bill be a first resort. So I think this is a good clarification.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment clarifies that civil fines may not exceed any limits set forth in a franchise agreement.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Volkey, this is also your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, the concern here that was raised by some of the utility companies is that they have franchise agreements with the county, which specify what fines they are allowed to be charged by the county. So we have set fines for noncompliance in this bill. To the extent that those fines do not exceed the franchise agreement, we can fine them if there's noncompliance. On the other hand, if they do exceed them, we want to have an out, so that we don't wind up in a situation where we're charging them things because the code requires it, and then we're having to fight with them again. So this is a clarifying amendment to ensure that whatever fines are being issued, if they are in excess of what's allowed, we won't charge them.
Would the administration like to respond?
No objection.
No objection. My colleagues have any? Nope. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five. This amendment precludes a director from suspending the issuance of pending permits.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
This is Mr. Volkey's amendment as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So an interesting point was raised by the utilities, and I'm not going to do it justice in explaining it, but the idea was, what different categories of permits exist in terms of issuance stages? There could be pending permits, there could be active permits, and then supposedly, there could even be future permits, which I suppose are something that's contemplated. Ms. Sheuett and I went back and forth about this. I'm not sure that we 100% agree with all of the different definitions on where these permits are, and maybe we'll have to keep addressing that. But one of the most important things that the carriers raised, the utilities raised, was the idea that if they have pending work in the county, and that they are now being non-responsive on another project, if the county were to pull a pending permit from I'm not sure that we 100% agree with all of the different definitions on where these permits are, and maybe we'll have to keep addressing that, but one of the most important things that the carriers raised, the utilities raised, was the idea that if they have pending work in the county, and that they are now being nonresponsible on another project, if the county were to pull a pending permit from them, it penalizes the utility, but furthermore, it really penalizes the end user, which is the consumer and the citizen in the county. So the concern with this is to take that out of the equation as it pertains to pending permits. I think I've explained that correctly, but if I haven't, I know that there are people in the room who will correct me.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this?
Pete Barron with the administration. I like Councilman Volkey, I'm no expert on this, so I'm going to turn there. Did he do okay?
Yes, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I think that's a fair representation. I see it as, that's a permit that's in the queue. We're act, you know, we're, we haven't issued it yet, we're in the process of reviewing it, and we certainly don't want to harm the applicant, which is ultimately the consumer. This isn't, the intent of this is not to do that. It's more those future permits, so we basically cease accepting new applications until such time the cure is, the remedy is accomplished.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Five is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 220 as amended will be heard on March 2nd, 2020. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 420.
Bill Number 420, An ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplemental reappraisalation and transfer of funds.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me, for the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Teroux from Budget, Mr. Shaknovich, and Mr. Stansky from the schools, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is sticking at the table from Office of Law. Bill 4-20 appropriates $3,716,700 of additional funds made up of local revenue and federal and state grants to the local Board of Education, and transfers funds among categories in the local education fund. There are no county dollars in this transfer. Mr. Stansky, Director of Financial Operations, and Mr. Shaknovich, the COO of the schools, can answer any questions you may have. To be clear, nothing in this bill affects maintenance of effort requirements. So with that, I'll turn it over to the experts to see if anything they want to add.
Mr. Pousky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Per ethics protocol, my spouse is an employee of the school system. I want to fully disclose that, and I will be voting on this bill. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
For the same disclosure, I am a part-time employee of the school system, and I also will be voting on this bill.
Do we have any questions for my colleagues? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I asked us at the work session, and I'm just going to ask it again so that the public can hear if they haven't, but if these grants were not renewed in a subsequent year, the school system is confident that we could absorb these costs without additional funding requests. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am. For the record, Alec Checkin, Chief Operating Officer. Again, based on our historical turnover patterns in terms of employment, the categories of employees that are contemplated under these grants could easily be absorbed and turnover. We're very careful to not employ singletons that cannot be repurposed at some later point should something to this grant transpire.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have any other further questions for my colleagues? We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Again, I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to come speak on Bill Number 420? Seeing no movement from the audience, we will now close the public hearing on Bill Number 420. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 420.
Bill Number 420, An ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplemental reappraisalation and transfer of funds.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 420.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 420 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 520.
Bill Number 520, An ordinance concerning zoning, administrative hearings, variances, resource conservation area.
This is an administration bill?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
I have a lot of folks joining me at the table, so we will share our microphones as appropriate. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Johnston, also from the County Execs Office, from OPZ, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Crenitz, and Ms. Rhodes, from the Department of Natural Resources, and I apologize for butchering anybody's name, Ms. Charbonneau, the Executive Director of the Critical Area Commission, and Emily Marini, the Assistant AG, and from Office of Law, Mr. Greg Swain. We discussed this bill at the work session, and I want to sort of repeat a few things that we discussed. Natural Resources Article and COMAR limit the development of land within the resource conservation area to a density not to exceed one dwelling unit per 20 acres. Critical area law allows this limitation to be exceeded in two ways. The lot or parcel is less than 20 acres in size and is grandfathered or through the growth allocation process. Critical area law and regulations do not provide for a variance in the 1 to 20-acre density restriction. Processing a variance to the RCA density could result in the granting of the variance request. The Critical Area Commission has notified the county that in the event a variance to the RCA density was approved, the county critical area program would be in conflict with critical area law, and would need to be reviewed by the Critical Area Commission under the Natural Resources Article. Currently, the county code does not contain language that would preclude the acceptance and process of a variance application to the RCA density. Therefore, Bill 520 would clarify that variances to RCA density are prohibited. This prohibition is stricter than state law, which is allowed for under, allowed for a local critical area program pursuant to Natural Resources Article, Section 8-1808(c)(1). We've had seven variances since 1995. I'll ask folks at the table to answer any questions you have, and open it up to particularly our friends from the Critical Area Commission, if you have anything to add, if I missed anything.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I think you did a wonderful job summarizing the concern and issue. My name is Kate Charbonneau. I'm the Executive Director with the Critical Area Commission. I just want to speak in support of Anaronda County Bill 5-20 prohibiting granting of a variance to density in the RCA. As stated, state law limits density in the RCA to one dwelling unit per 20 acres. There is really no authority in state law to vary RCA density provisions. However, Anaronda County currently has a process that gives the appearance that a variance to state law could be obtained by allowing an individual to apply for a variance to RCA density, when in fact, that avenue does not exist. Anaronda County is required to have its local critical area program approved by the commission. Any program provision that allows for variance to density in the RCA across any local critical area program could, could not be approved by the commission because it would be in conflict with state law, and any local process that allows for it really has no effect on state law. So this bill, we see as essentially clarifying existing state law under Anaronda County procedures.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barron, you said seven variances have been granted along these lines since 1995?
That is the data that we were able to pull from Office of Planning and Zoning.
And do we have any pending variances currently that this would impact this legislation?
I defer to the experts.
Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. I believe we have a variance that is, has been postponed that could be impacted by this bill.
Okay. I mean, I just say this, to me, seven since 1995 in the last 25 years feels like a solution looking for a problem. So I guess what I'm trying to understand from the administration is what's the need for this bill if we literally are talking about, about one of these, what, every four years, something like that, a little less than that? I'm just, I'm confused as to what the impetus is for this now and why we're bringing it. So if anybody can offer any insight on that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll sort of say that the Critical Area Commission was the one that brought this to our, our attention. State law, as you know, trumps local law.
I get that. So if state law trumps local law, then it wouldn't matter what our law is because we're going to follow whatever the state law is. But, Mr. Swain, please, you had something you wanted to add?
Good evening. Greg Swain, county attorney. The problem we ran into here is our zoning code allows variances to any provision in the zoning code unless it's specifically prohibited. So the RCA uses are provided for in the zoning code, so we have really what comes to be a conflict where the commission is saying, well, this is what state law prohibits, but our county law allows it. This is meant to bring us in compliance with the commission, so both of our, both state law, county law prohibit these types of variances.
Okay. Maybe I missed that. I thought there was something that you sent to us in response to this that indicated there had been a statement at the work session that all this did was brought us into compliance, and this basically regurgitated state law in the county code, but then there was some statement that that may not be wholly accurate. Did I misinterpret that, or what?
I think, it kind of depends on how you look at it. I'll put it that way. So under state law, under state statute, and under COMAR, you will not find a provision that says you cannot grant a density or a variance to RCA density. In our code, that's typically how we do that. We would say you can't grant a variance to this, whatever that provision might be. The commission's interpretation of how that law applies is that the density variances are not allowed. So that, if you asked me to point to a specific provision of state law that said you can't grant a density variance to RCA, I wouldn't be able to point that, you to that provision. I think what the commission is saying, and they can certainly add to this, is their interpretation of the program as a whole sort of infers an intent that there not be any variation from that 1 and 20 density unless it's through grandfathering or growth allocation. So what we're trying to do is bring, you know, and the Critical Area Commission is the state agency that has to apply this law, so their interpretation of the law carries a great deal of weight. When this was brought to our attention recently, and probably not brought to our attention before because we don't see these very often, as you said, it's uncommon, when this was brought to our attention, we felt it prudent because our local program does have to comply with state requirements, that we bring our program into compliance by coming forth with this bill, which is what we did. So.
I'll just ask one final follow-up because I know others have questions, but who is it that ultimately grants the variance or denies it from the county level?
Administrative hearing officer.
Okay. And so even if one was to apply for this density and change in the RCA, we still have an ability to say, state law doesn't allow us to do it, therefore denied, at the hearing officer level, right?
Well, it just becomes much more muddled because that person could appeal that to the Board of Appeals, appeal it to the circuit court, and ultimately you may get one of those fact-finders or adjudicators to say, well, where in county, the county law says you can grant a variance to any provision, and the state law, you're saying there's no specific provision that prohibits it. So.
But if the state law trumps the county law, and we have to follow the state law, then the fact-finder following the state law, if they found that the county law superseded the state law, would be clearly erroneous.
Well, probably. Probably. But I think the distinction here is, as I said earlier, you can't point to a, I mean, first of all, if we thought that state law trumped it, we may not come forward with this bill, but we think to be clear that we need to come forward with this bill because there's a conflict between the way that the state looks at this and the way that the county looks at this. So these kind of cases shouldn't be decided by determining conflicts and having maybe conflicting opinions about the weight of county law versus interpretation of state law.
Okay.
And Ms. Charbonneau wants to add something, if you don't mind.
Sure. I'm going to turn off my light so I don't get in trouble.
Thank you. I just want to clarify the point. The Critical Area Law lays out minimum provisions that every jurisdiction's critical area program must contain, and then it specifically notes where a county can have alternative provisions that are then reviewed and approved by the commission. So it operates sort of in the opposite, so there's not a provision that allows generally for variance to every provision. There is actually very specific requirements laid out in the law as to what a local jurisdiction can authorize a variance for. It does not contain language that says, therefore you cannot authorize a variance under these things. It's just generally prohibited that RCA density is limited to 1 per 20. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I guess, so what I'm hearing from this conversation is, it's not actually really clear in the state law, so this bill may actually be going a little bit above and beyond what the prescription in the state law is, because if it, if it is something that our hearing officer could grant, and the Board of Appeals could grant, and the courts could find is allowable under the state law and under our county code, then putting this in here doesn't necessarily just bring us into compliance. It almost seems like, I mean, we're putting an outright prohibition on, on something that doesn't actually exist in state law. We're, we're putting an outright prohibition based on the current interpretation of those, of that code, or of the law by the commission. I, I'm seeing a difference here, and it, it strikes me that that's probably why this bill was brought down, because there is this gray area, and it's a policy decision as to whether or not this council would like to make that determination. But what I'm hearing from you is that this is not absolutely necessary to bring us into compliance with the state law.
No, no, it is. And here's the reason. Again, the Critical Area Commission has regulatory authority over all the local programs. They've advised us that our program is not in compliance because we allow these types of variances. So whether that's interpretation of the commission and interpretation of mine, it really doesn't matter, because if we don't cure it, they are going to suspend our critical area program, which means none of the critical area projects would be able to be approved. So it is necessary to bring us in compliance because the agency that has authority over us is telling us we need to do it. Now, they're not making it up. My point is, you're not going to see a provision in the critical area law that says variances to RCA density are prohibited. I think what the commission is saying is that it's a little different than that, the reading is a little different than that, because what, that the only way that you can get around the 1 and 20 density is through grandfathering or growth allocation. We don't think that's clear in our code. I mean, and we know that our code expressly allows these types of variances because we allow variances to anything in the zoning code that's not already prohibited. So we're not doing this because we want to be tougher than state law, we're doing this because the state agency that has jurisdiction over us is saying, you're not in compliance, you have to do it.
When was the last variance granted? If we had seven in the last 25 years, when was the last one?
One of the things, because I've had the benefit of working in a variety of different jurisdictions, I'm sorry, I've had the benefit of working in a variety of, it's just, yeah.
We're not working, so, pardon me. I've had the benefit of working in a variety of jurisdictions that had critical area programs from its inception, and I think one of the things that's important in this whole discussion is Anaronda County does have overall a very liberal mechanism for how variances can be handled, applied and granted. I'm not aware of any other jurisdiction who can grant a density variance, whether it's inside the critical areas or outside the critical areas. So we are unusual in that sense that a variance can be granted to literally anything in the zoning code. In most jurisdictions, you're limited to a very select number of items that you could even apply for. I think that complicates things for us.
Do we know when the last one was granted?
I'll have to get that data to you. I don't have the exact date.
Okay. I guess my question is then, so what happens to the last one that was, was granted? Did the Critical Area Commission weigh in at that point?
So the few variances prior to this past fall, but I think the prior one was maybe four or five years ago, were for properties that were created not in conformance with the county subdivision requirements, but prior to state critical area law, so prior to 1985. So the commission's perspective, while we have testified before that we didn't believe an RCA density variance was appropriate, the, the process that the county had in place as a way to deal with those properties, because they were addressing properties that were prior to 1985, and that's when the critical area law came into effect, we did not take any specific action on those variance decisions. I think there is a case, though, one that was recently denied, is not that situation. This would be a, a new density variance, is how I would view it.
If it were an old density variance, if it were prior to 1985, that this first came up, would that make a difference?
So the, the critical area law requires counties to have grandfathering provisions within their program to sort of obviously recognize grandfather development rights. You know, there are other procedures that counties have used to recognize those grandfathering rights, and those, that would be up to the discretion of Anarundel County on those pre-1985 lots.
But that's the cutoff, 1985 is the, the date?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got for now. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My understanding is that there, there is an application right now and that it involves a deed from 1939 where there's three plat, three lots. And there was a meeting that took place and they're not going to need a variance, understood that there's another procedure afterwards for what they want to do, but the variance is not necessary. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Radveen.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to ask a question, actually of anyone that would like to answer it or anyone who can answer it. Would passing this legislation help prevent a property owner from going down a path that ultimately would take them to a dead end? Like, might save the property owner a whole lot of trouble and hassle by applying for a variance that they would never get in the end?
I, I think so. The last, one of the things that Ms. Charbonne talked about was variance hearing about four or five years ago, and I'm familiar with that. We, the county opposed that. And we were able to resolve that because we were able to, to figure out based on the way the property had been conveyed over the years that it was eligible for some grandfathering. But it's a very, usually we oppose those types of variances.
Mr. Volkey.
Back again. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Swain, I wanted to make sure I understood what you said. What's going to happen if we don't pass this? The commission's going to do what?
Well, I think the commission has given us notice that if we don't pass this, then our program will not be in compliance and they will suspend our program.
Which means what practically?
Which I believe, I think in this instance, it would be the ability to grant any variances in the critical area.
It's a process that we would have to advise our commission, which is a 28-member board, and they make, they make the final decision. So I can only speak to the advice. But basically, when those actions happen and we believe there's an omission, error, conflict with state law, and the commission makes a determination that that has occurred, then yes, they can restrict the county from making certain decisions related to that issue until the issue is resolved.
I just feel like we're being held hostage a little bit on this one, that either we have to do it or else this outside group, which is interpreting COMAR, it sounds like, but is not actually a lawmaking body and is frankly unelected as compared to the rest of us up here, that we're being told we have to do something in particular. This is bureaucracy run amok, which just blows me away, but whatever. I, I want to talk about the facts of this particular situation that's in front of us. So as Ms., as Councilwoman Fiedler started to talk about, the situation that I'm aware of that has triggered all of this is a 1939 plat subdivision, whatever. They're going through this process. I understand there was a meeting sometime in, I think it was January, where this bill had been introduced, but Planning and Zoning and the Critical Area Commission met with the owners of the property as well as their attorney. No one in that meeting advised them that this bill had been put in and there was some discussion about what they would or would not be able to do. I'm just curious if there was a reason why they weren't advised that this bill, which clearly affects them and is literally targeted to this situation, was never brought up in that meeting?
Well, I think the, the reason is because the purpose of the meeting was to achieve a solution from them, which would avoid them having to file for a variance. And the conclusion of the meeting, and we were all present at the meeting, we all, we reached a consensus that based on what we saw, based on that 1937.
39.
Conveyance, 39D and some subsequent conveyances.
Right.
That we would be able to fix the problem without them having to go through the variance process.
And so there had been some discussion, I know amongst others on the council, that we would add a grandfathering provision to this bill. Is there any opposition from the administration or the Critical Area Commission or law to say that we can't do it, to add a grandfathering provision to this bill to ensure that these folks are covered by this?
Legally, you can.
Well, I understand that we can. And it sounds like this is exactly the situation that we're talking about, the pre-1985 Critical Area Commission.
I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to speak.
Sure.
And then turn over to the Critical Area Commission if they have anything they want to add.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. Because we were given notice by the Critical Area Commission that we are not in compliance, if you will, with the current intent of the state regulations, if we put in a grandfathering provision tonight, that would say we are not in compliance as of whatever grandfathering provision. And there is all ready provisions in the Critical Area legislation pre-1985 that any lot pre-1985 is grandfathered in. And beyond that, I'll hand it over to Critical Area to, to speak more to it.
I think should an amendment be included that provided some type of application grandfathering date, the bill as, as approved by this body would, must be submitted to the commission and reviewed and approved by the commission before it can come into effect. The commission limits its review as to what is in conformance with state critical area law and the regulations. And it has four options in terms of what to do with those proposed program amendments. It can approve. It can approve with conditions. It can return a bill with list of proposed changes to be made, or it can deny. So as to the outcome, that would be up to, up to the commission. But again, what they look at is they are looking for conformity with state law and criteria.
So what if we said some sort of grandfathering provision that said, not necessarily about applications for density variances that are submitted prior to a date certain, but if we said, if you submit one and you owned the property prior to 1985, then this doesn't apply to you because that's prior to the Critical Area Commission law? Would that be acceptable to the commission?
I don't know that it's related to ownership.
Okay.
Prior to 1985. I think it would be related to, back to the grandfathering provisions as they are laid out. If it's properly grandfathered, then, you know, that's, that's, I think, without seeing language, moving in the right direction.
So what would be properly grandfathered from the commission's perspective?
So the, let me see if I can find the. She'll just give me a minute. So the grandfathering language that's provided for in the criteria puts the responsibility onto the local jurisdictions to establish and permit the continuation, but not necessarily the intensification or expansion of any use in existence on the date of program approval. If any use does not conform with the provisions of a local program, its intensification or expansion may be permitted only in accordance with variance procedures. And then local jurisdictions shall establish grandfather provisions as part of their local critical area programs. And then it lists out a number of different dates and the types of grandfathering procedures. So I think that's, you know, if there is a different procedure that is put in place for those lots or parcels, that would be something that would need to come from the county in recognition of its subdivision regulations prior to 1985.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to speak because I, I don't agree with my colleague's comment that with the feeling of the county being sort of held hostage by, by the state, I think not only is it inappropriate, but actually we just happen to be the council sitting when the bills are coming due to be paid, when certain, you know, errors or omissions on the part of the county perhaps are being pointed out to us and we need to fix them by legislation, which is our role to do. And when the, when DNR threw, I guess if it was Program Open Space or whatever it was, that they discovered that we were out of compliance with the grants that had been given to us for Beverly Triton Beach Park, said to me as, as a defense attorney, as a white-collar fraud attorney, that there's probably more, so let's just get it out in the open. And I'm sure the state sent its letter in good faith. Our county attorney's interpretation of what's needed to come into compliance is made in good faith. I don't think the facts of the specific pending application matter. And in fact, if we pass this bill as it is, then, you know, probably whoever's application is pending, they should get their fees back, whatever they paid to, to have it heard. And let that be that and let's move on.
Mr. Pusky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been here for a while, but I haven't been here that long. But I believe in the mid-1980s, this body, even though none of us were here, supported fully the Critical Area Commission. If I recall, there was a, a resolution or something that did come forward that supported those efforts. And I do recall, because as a former member of the Board of Appeals and community association president, there's been various times where either through the general development plan or through legislation, that we have comported to the Critical Area Commission because the council viewed that as a body that certainly has good intentions and trying to protect the environment and do other things. Now, certainly we don't always agree from that end, but again, speaking with a little of the history here, I believe, and I have to go back, but the council members who sat here were fully supportive of the critical area because at the time, nothing was really being done at the state level to kind of step up efforts to look at the wider range, particularly in Anarundel County. And that's why it was founded, because of those particular areas. So I don't have it in front of me, but certainly we can look back. Maybe there's audio, Joanne, we can find, but I know it's there somewhere. Thanks.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I guess my final question on this. So if we do nothing or we don't pass this tonight, there will be a report back to the Critical Area Commission, which I agree with Mr. Pusky, we, nobody's saying that we shouldn't have a Critical Area Commission, so let me be clear about that. I just don't like this idea that, anyway, whatever, everybody knows what I think. My question to you would be, if the report back to the Critical Area Commission is, Anarundel County has elected not to address this problem, then there will be some decision potentially that comes out of the Critical Area Commission that may say all variances are suspended. At that point, if that happens, then this council could take up this exact same bill at that moment without the question of whether the Critical Area Commission's going to do it or not. And no, to rectify this situation, we have to pass this bill. Am I understanding the process correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no urgency at this moment that we do this because we could always fix this after the Critical Area Commission actually makes a definitive decision that we need to do this. At this point, we're sort of speculating on whether we need to do it, is what it seems like. Mr. Swain, you disagree with me, please?
Well, I disagree because the whole reason this, we're having this discussion is because the Critical Area Commission notified us that our program was not in compliance and we needed to fix it. So what you're talking about is what are they going to do.
Right.
In response to that. And I can tell you, just last year, this council approved a bill to update our program because we ran into an issue with reconfiguration of lots. In that case, the Critical Area Commission gave us notice and they suspended our, our authority to approve any reconsolidations until we fixed it.
And then we fixed it.
We fixed it, came in front of the board.
Yep.
Right. We're trying to avoid that, I guess, is the, is the reason why we're being proactive in this.
And I appreciate the proactivity, but I'm also, there's no certainty yet that the Critical Area Commission is going to say, you're out. They've notified us of what they believe is an inconsistency, but frankly, we've got COMAR issues, we've got state law issues, we've got county issues, so they're all kind of tied together. I'd be curious to know what the exact decision of the Critical Area Commission is before we're passing legislation. That's, that's my only point and I.
That's not right?
More or less, yeah.
Ms. Hare. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. How many other counties have this exact same language in their code?
No other counties I have seen have accepted applications for RCA density variances.
Ever?
No.
But they don't have this outright prohibition on it? They just don't do it?
They don't accept applications, so they don't have local program procedures in place that allow for it.
That's been my experience in, in the other jurisdictions that I've worked.
Okay. So they don't, I mean, but so that's, this, they just don't accept them? They don't have an outright prohibition on it in their code? They just don't accept any?
There are provisions laid out for what variance you can ask for, and density is not one of them, whether it's outside of the critical areas or within the critical areas. And that stops variance application from coming in.
And that's.
An applicant could appeal an administrative decision to follow the code, but they would typically lose.
And that's universal in all the other Maryland counties?
In my experience, and I think you're confirming that.
So every other, every other county, we are the sole outlier in that you could file a variance for a density?
From what I have seen, yes.
Okay.
And I think that's the result of our zoning code saying you can vary any provision in the zoning code, which is apparently unusual.
It is very unusual.
Okay. And other counties, the code doesn't expressly allow for it, but theoretically someone could appeal a denial?
What the codes do typically is provide criteria that you can apply for a variance. And it's typically bulk, height, setback, but what we typically call bulk standards. You're not allowed to apply for a variance to density, nor would you be allowed to grant a variance to density. If an applicant tried to do that, we would say, no, you can't apply for that because we don't have any provisions to allow an application to come in or to approve. If they disagreed, they could file an appeal to that decision. I don't recall anyone ever filing an appeal to that. It just, just didn't happen.
But am I misunderstanding that that's no different than currently our hearings officer saying, Critical Area Commission won't let us grant this density variance and you can appeal my decision if you disagree? It seems to me it's exactly the same thing.
See, I, I don't believe that, if our code has no provision for applying for a variance, I don't believe the refusal to accept an application would be an appealable decision.
But the denial of the variance would be an appealable decision?
If there, if there were a variance applied for, and that's the process we have in place now.
Right.
You can apply for the variance and it gets denied. If you can't apply for the variance, there's no administrative decision being made. It's a legislative decision that's being made.
Right.
And there's no right to appeal from that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do have several people signed up. Will the following people please come forward? Mr. Davis, please state your name and address for the record and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the county council. My name is Derek Davis. My address is 11112 Thomas Swan Lane, Davidsonville, Maryland 21035. I am also the owner of 2689 Solomon's Island Road, Edgewater, Maryland 21037. I'm here tonight to ask for your support to the grandfathering amendment to Bill 5-20. The property that I have owned for over 50 years could be severely affected with the passage of the Bill 5-20. Without the grandfathering clause, without the grandfathering clause, although I am encouraged with the offer from Anarundel Community, or Anarundel County to work with us for the lot consolidation, you can refer to the chronology package that, that I have distributed. The offer suggested thus far requested subdivision with no guarantees. I have learned from the past that this is always good to have a Plan B. As a matter of fact, our Plan B was our Plan A until we were offered a meeting with the Office of Planning and Zoning, Critical Area Commission and Office of Law. After I and my brother having owned property for 50 years, paying taxes on this property for over 50 years and taking care of the property for 50 years, nearly 30 years before critical area law took effect, I am shocked to find out that I have no property rights. I ask for your support to this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the county council. My name's Dee Davis, 1112 Thomas Swan Lane, Davidsonville, Maryland 21035. I'm here to ask you for your support in a grandfathering clause in respect to Bill 520. My family could be subject to serious repercussions should a grandfathering clause not be included on this bill. My family's property that was subdivided by deed in. My family's property that was subdivided by deed and transferred to my husband and his brother per their grandfather's wishes in 1969, over 50 years ago, upon submission for a permit for our property, was found to be illegally subdivided, although a professional was retained to do so. Needless to say, we were shocked. We had a various application in process for a hearing. As a matter of fact, the hearing was to have been February 6. Upon a meeting with the Office of Planning and Zoning on the 23rd of January, the Office of Law and representatives from the Critical Area Commission, where they discussed a willingness to work with us upon the discovery the property originally purchased to the family was actually three lots in a 1939 deed. You can see this in the package distributed by my husband. We were excited about this offer, especially paying such high property taxes for property that we evidently have no property rights. With a variance hearing two weeks away, we did request a postponement, giving some time for this new agreement to work. We also found out after the meeting that the Bill 520 was introduced just two days prior to our meeting. Although I don't think the admission from the county of not informing us of Bill 520 was intentional, it leaves us with many questions. It could possibly put us into a very gray area, such as a change in administration, somebody transfers, someone changes jobs that we're currently working with, because our solution is not resolved. With less than 30 days of notice on the vote on this bill, certainly not enough time to reach an agreement, and definitely no guarantees from the county, we ask for your support in a grandfathering clause with Bill 520. Since we postponed our current hearing for the variance at the request of the county in good faith.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Roy Little?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the council. My name is Roy Little. I live at 708 Black Forest Road in Annapolis, Maryland 21409. I am here tonight to also discuss this grandfathering provision. I represent... I'm an engineer. I represent the Davis family in trying to help them be successful in developing this property that they own. And the one... We did have a meeting, as everyone's mentioned, with the county, and I think... I do believe a resolution is forthcoming. However, if it doesn't, this bill would severely hamper our efforts. One thing I obviously would love you to do is a grandfathering provision, but listening to Ms. Hare's question, I think one of the things you'll find is if you look at critical area law, and I heard Mr. Ziegler as well, I think every county's grandfathering provisions are different. Our grandfathering provision affects this severely. If you look at maybe Queen Anne's County, some other ones, the reason you're not seeing as many variances is because their grandfathering provisions are different. And I think that's a significant factor. I also want to bring to your attention real quickly is, if you... I heard all this about the section, but if you look at Section 270112.02 of the local program, critical area oversight, ComAR, the wording says, "Local jurisdiction shall include standards and procedures in its local critical area program for granting of a variance to the provisions of Title VIII," and this is all this critical area law. So in the critical area law, there is a provision, even though the state's saying there's not... They have this, and our program has to have that in it. We can't just say, "There are no variances." So I think taking a look at that might help you a little bit. And I'm also going to make last statement. The law did come into effect roughly 1985, and why that's a long time to not recognize that this is an issue and not make this change a long time ago. It kind of fascinates me that it just happened to come up right now. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Plot?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the council. David Plot, I'm an attorney at law for Melina's and Blocker in Annapolis, Maryland, and I also represent the Davis family. First, I have been practicing land use law. I was actually a planner before I became an attorney, and I've argued cases all the way to the Court of Appeals, High School of the State on critical areas. And I can tell you, my view, and I'd be glad to take this to the Court of Appeals, is that there is no prohibition on density variances in the critical area law, and ComAR are in the annotated code of Maryland, and that the fact that the Critical Area Commission has not objected to the seven cases that came previously, and the Critical Area Commission actually approves the county's program. So I don't think there's any prohibition. We are very appreciative that the county is trying to find a solution in conjunction with the commission to this issue for the Davises, because it's extremely unfair, the situation that they're facing. And it's only by virtue of the fact that they found this old 1939 unrecorded plat that now we're in the discussion during the lot consolidation. But these were lots that the grandparents gave to the kids back in 1969, 20 years before Bill 4988 enacted the county's critical area law. And then they go to try to get a permit, and they're told, "Well, guess what? You don't have two lots." And we were directed that you need to get a density variance at that time, so we applied for it. We applied for the RCA density variance. We subsequently had the meeting with the county and with the commission. It seemed like we could find another solution, and so we all agreed to postpone the hearing. And we postponed the hearing, then subsequently found out about the fact that this bill was in, which would preclude them, if there is a change in any kind of policies or views, from being able to proceed, to be able to develop the lots they've been paying taxes on for 50 years. So I would encourage you to do grandfathering in this situation, because as a matter of fairness, somebody who's in the process was directed to do this by the county, it's only fair to allow them proceed if things fall apart on the lot consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiBacco?
Hi, I'm Tom DiBacco, 3021 O'Donnell Street, Baltimore, Maryland. I just wanted to start by very broadly speaking about what's being asked here. I first wanted to start. I'm a pretty big fan of the country, and one of the best things about our country is how it operates. When people have an issue with each other, they get to take it to court, they get to go see a judge. A hearing is made, a hearing's made, the judgment's made, and, you know, people get their decision. If people have an issue about what's going on with their property, they get to go to the court again, they get to ask for a variance, they get to make their case. The opposing side gets to come and makes their case, and an administrative judge comes in, and he's going to make a fair judgment, and people get their hearing, and they get their judgment, which is a big part of how this country works, right? And right or wrong, that's... Everyone gets to make their case about what they want. And I guess what they're asking here is that, you know, some of these people over here that live in this area can no longer come and make their case and ask for a variance. But everybody else, they can still do that. But just these people that are living in the critical area no longer have this opportunity, right? And it just doesn't seem like it's very fair. And I heard some gentleman say that, "Okay, well, you couldn't... You weren't really allowed to make this variance in the first place." But yet, then he said that seven variances have been made. So clearly, you can't, right? And then he went on to say, and he said, "Well, you know, if it does get done, or, you know, you're just gonna... They're just gonna say no." Okay. And if they say no, you can appeal it. Well, yeah, of course you can appeal it, because that's how the system works, right? So like, the system is really just what's going on here today. There are two sides. You get to make a case, and someone's going to make a decision about it. And I don't see why they're taking that away.
Thank you, sir. Those were the only individuals signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on Bill Number 520?
Thank you, Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Since you all are so young, I guess it's time for the old geezers to come forward and make a couple of comments. Tonight, this auditorium, or this hall, is filled with watermen and people who care about the watermen and the tremendous harvest of food that we obtain from our waters. And so for people like me, who've been around since before 1985, you need to understand, perhaps, the legislative intent. We were terribly concerned about the loss of the nursery grounds for those creatures that are in the food chain, supporting those creatures that we harvest for food for the population, whether they're crabs, oysters, fish, and so on. And so there was an understanding that this part of the land that is so close to the water is critical to the survival of those creatures that live in both areas. They are not necessarily what you're harvesting. You know, maybe in the old days, you harvested turtles, but no longer. But these are critical to the survival of our food supply, and therefore, it was necessary to preserve that natural habitat and protect it from the people who, and you all know... I mean, I hate to have people think I'm opposed to developers and real estate people and builders and so on, but there is a concern. If it's land I want to build on it, and I'm going to make buckets of money, because everybody wants waterfront property. And that was what was going on then. And so how do we protect this critically important part of our environment?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
I'm going to do a last call on Bill Number 520 for this public hearing. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 520 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 520.
Bill Number 520: An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Administrative Hearings Variances Resource Conservation Area.
Is there any further discussion? I have been... We have an amendment in front of us now. Madam Secretary, will you please read Amendment Number 1?
Amendment Number 1. This amendment grandfathers an application for a variance to density in the RCA filed on or before the introduction date of Bill Number 520.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the benefit of my colleagues, this is the identical amendment that was floated earlier today around 2:30 as it pertains to grandfathering. The only difference is the name of the sponsor of the amendment. So with that said, I have my name on this amendment, and this would indicate that applications filed for a variance to density in the RCA filed on or before the introduction date of Bill 520, which is January 21, 2020, would be governed by the law in the county as it applied prior to 520. As I've heard it, it sounds like there is one pending application that this would deal with, which is the one that we've heard from the property owners on. It only seems fair to me, given this council's strong preference for grandfathering that we've expressed in a variety of pieces of legislation, that we continue that practice by ensuring that the rights and privileges that pertain to property at the time, that people owned that property and submitted their request, and acted in good faith, I might add, particularly based on some of the comments that Mr. Plot stated with respect to postponing their requests and trying to work with the county, while they did not realize that this bill was in. I think that they were trying to work in good faith with the county. So to me, it only makes sense that we provide this protection to them going forward, and I'd ask you all to support it.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this?
Absolutely. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Appreciate the councilman's intent for reasons we stated with the bill prior when we were up here a few minutes ago. We would ask the council to reject this amendment. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kai Ziegler, who has, I think, some light he can shed on this. I think the county is operating in good faith.
Good evening. I think in trying to explain this a little further, what is important to remember is that even if there's a grandfathering provision that is approved, and the Davises continue with their variance application, assuming that the hearing examiner approved it, the very administrative remedies that we had pointed out, and when I say "we," Office of Planning and Zoning, the Office of Law, and the Critical Area Commission and their staff, they would still have to follow up with those same administrative procedures in order to bring their lots into conformance. They basically involve what we call an amended plat, and there would also have to be a modification that I, as the... as Planning and Zoning Officer, would have to grant. But they would still need to occur even if they had achieved their goal of getting the variance. The variance doesn't solve everything for them. I think that's important to keep in mind.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It certainly doesn't solve everything, but if they had the variance, it certainly puts them in a position where they can negotiate with planning and zoning on some other things that might put them in a better posture, if you will, in their dealings with the county. Because at that point, they would have something that they would be willing to discuss with the county, saying, "We've got something, you've got something, let's find a way to work together." As it stands right now, it looks like if we pass this, they will be in a situation where they have absolutely nothing, and they're continuing to negotiate with the county, where the county holds all the cards, and they have very little, if nothing. The other thing I would add is that if we pass this bill with this grandfathering amendment, and the Critical Area Commission comes back and says, "It's inappropriate for you to have the grandfathering provision," they're going to send it back to us, and we're going to have to pass the bill again without the grandfathering provision. But at least we can try and see what Critical Area Commission says. So we're still getting the net result that everyone's looking for, which is to prohibit variances in the RCA. So it seems to me to be a no-brainer to add this in, and we'll see what the Critical Area Commission says, but at least we're passing the underlying substance of the bill that they're looking for.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I was going to... Something similar along those lines. This does give sort of, I think, the Critical Area Commission what they're looking for moving forward, because it has a date certain on the grandfathering. And while it may not solve all of the problems of this particular application, it really just brings the parties to the table and gives them the opportunity to go through the process, which I think is what we are talking about on a fundamental fairness standpoint, that someone already in the process should be allowed to complete the process as it was when they started the process. And that's kind of something we have talked about a lot. So I don't know that anyone is saying this will solve all problems one way or the other, but I do think it's important, and I will be supporting the amendment.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I originally had drafted an amendment very similar and pulled it because, discussing with Planning and Zoning, that a variance wouldn't be necessary. In the particular case, it's been discussed. Someone came up and spoke and noted that, "And any, you know, three years from now, we may not be with the same administration." And that is concerning to me, because I know that the process of doing a project like this, it can be very lengthy. So I will be supporting this amendment in light of the testimony given here this evening.
I have a question. There's already grandfathering provisions in the critical area law. Can we... We've got grandfathering, and we've got this.
Different provisions.
Okay.
What the critical area law provides is that if you had substandard lots that were not... didn't meet the 1 and 20, and they were in a designated RCA, and you had a use on those lots, which I think they typically interpreted that to mean you had a house.
Or could be developed as a house.
Some type of use on the lot, then you could develop it further, notwithstanding that it did meet the 1 and 20 density requirement. So that's grandfathering at the state level for this bill, which changed an awful lot of things. And that bill passed in '85, and I adopted... Our program is from 1988. That's grandfathering on the state level. This is grandfathering to more or less... I mean, the only application is to Davises, to sort of let them in, you know, under the old law. You know, when we drafted the bill originally, we intended this as a refinement to our program, which really doesn't go through that commission review, suggestion, et cetera. I think if it's amended with this amendment, it would certainly go through that process. And as to what they would do, I'm not sure, but it seems like they would not support it. So it is two different types of grandfathering.
Okay. Thank you.
But what is important, I think, is that there is an administrative remedy. There are techniques that exist within the zoning and critical area codes that allow the Davises to achieve what they want without a variance. I'm not... I feel like we're losing sight of that. And even if they get the variance, they will still have to undergo those processes.
But they don't need a variance to do what they...
We do not believe they need a variance to achieve what they're trying to achieve. Is that correct, Kelly?
Correct. The Davises, when we originally sent them for the variance, we were under the impression that there were two lots that had been created by deed, so they did not go through a legal subdivision process. When we met with them in January, Ms. Davis had spent... When we met with them in January, Ms. Davis had spent a fair amount of time at the courthouse and had come up with the 1935 plat that indicated that there were actually three grandfathered lots that had existed that we recognized. So that's why we don't, they don't need the variance. They have three development rights, three legally grandfathered, recognized development rights. They need to go through the process that Mr. Kai Ziegler was talking about to file an amended plat, to have these two lots reconfigured under the law consolidation and reconfiguration regulations that are in state law, to conform with the two lots that were conveyed by the parents to the children and the grandparents to the children. And once we do that, they have the two lots that they're trying to achieve. They don't need a variance for it. So the application was filed on, you know, not full information, but once this information came forward, there's no longer the need for the variance.
And we give a lot of credit to Ms. Davis for doing that research, for identifying an asset that existed a long time ago that allows us to take the position that we're taking. So in this case, variance, in our view, isn't necessary. There is a better fix or solution to the issue. If a variance is granted, they will still have to do everything Kelly and I are talking about. And I don't think it's an issue of they're in a better position or a worse position. The variance to us will be immaterial. If the variance were denied, they could still come back and do the exact same process Kelly and I are laying out.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so then, let me just understand this. If the variance is unnecessary, then there are no applications that are pending before Planning and Zoning that would be impacted by this grandfathering clause. So this grandfathering clause is effectively a nullity that helps or hurts no one, and so in that case, it has no effect, which would then lead me to my point of, then what's the harm in passing it with that? In fact, no one.
But there is a pending application. And if the, if the Davises chose to move forward with that, I guess they could, and we run a variety of risks with the Critical Area Commission. But it's also, I think it's expending unnecessary time and money on the Davises' part to pursue a fix that they don't need to pursue.
But who are we as the government to tell people how to spend their money? If they choose to pursue that remedy and spend the money and hire attorneys and go through that path, who are we as big brother government to come in and say, "No, no, 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 you can't spend your money that way"?
Well, I think this discussion is very transparent, and I'm sure they're listening to it.
And it's on the record. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I was just, I guess that's the wrong way. I'm hearing from you that they don't need a variance, but from their testimony and their attorney's testimony, there may be a difference of opinion here. And so I am hesitant to, I mean, I would prefer to have the grandfathering clause in if their attorney and their, you know, the homeowners or the property owners would like to proceed with that process that they started from a fairness standpoint. I think that option should be theirs, and it should not be ours to take away during the middle of that, of that process. Just because I, as I sit here today, I can't say whether they do need a variance or not. And so it's, it's a difficult position for us to be in. So I think we should allow them that opportunity.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I missed the memo that we were supposed to all wear our red robes today, but we're not like the Court of Appeals of Maryland or, you know, any other appellate court. I think we're not here to litigate the specific case. We have a bill that's brought before us, and we have a legislative decision to make. As I understand it, the grandfathering clause, including it in the bill, would require, if that amended bill were passed, would require the Critical Area Commission to actually review the whole law. Whereas, not amending it, not amending the bill that's before us, would not require the Critical Area Commission to review the law, would bring us into compliance, according to them. And there's still, the most important part is, there's full remedies available to the Davises to continue to untangle the history, which is, really, you're quite fortunate to have, to have had these properties left to you, and to just untangle it, because that's the normal situation that many other people find themselves in, having to untangle some sort of legal situation with property that someone else left to them. And I just don't see why there should be special treatment before our county council when there are these other remedies that are available. And it's not how we treat, you know, everybody else who comes, who comes before us. I don't lack sympathy for your situation to the Davises, but if you have a perfectly good legal remedy, then it is perfectly appropriate for us to say, "You need to follow the rules that we have in this other remedy," and move on with our lives.
Madam Auditor.
I just wanted to put on the record, I was informed by Planning and Zoning that there were two pending variances in the pipeline, and one recently denied variance that was denied by the administrative hearing officer and is still within the appeal period. Is that incorrect? I know we've just been talking about the one, and I just want to make sure that the council's aware that if there are others.
That is something that I would have to follow with Sterling Say, who is the zoning administrator, to give me those, that information. That's probably where you received that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I received it from, I think we received it from you, so you probably had gotten it from them.
Yes.
Seeing no other discussion from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
I'd just like to take a minute to say, I am truly sympathetic to the position that you're in, but I'm also fully confident that the administration will work with you to get the resolution that you're achieving. I will vote nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number One is defeated.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please, are we, is there any further discussion on this bill? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 520.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill Number 520 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 620.
Bill Number 620, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts Watermen's Commercial Use.
This is Ms. Fiedler's bill. I will, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With over 530 miles of shoreline in our county, the waterman industry finds it challenging to find locations to operate their commercial uses. This bill makes it such that if a waterman can provide evidence of the waterman's commercial use on a property that's been in existence as of January 1, 1990, it is considered a permitted use. There are underlying regulations that would prohibit growth of such a use. The bill does not immediately grant permitted use, rather requires the applicant to provide evidence beyond aerial photos to Planning and Zoning. And Planning and Zoning then has the discretion, upon review of the evidence, to either grant or not grant a zoning certificate. Planning and Zoning would still have the ability to investigate any written complaints. The bill does not allow watermen's home commercial use, which is a conditional use, to become a permitted use by right. I believe that if a waterman can provide 30 years of documentation of their use, the code should reflect that they are permitted. Finally, I would like to read a quote from a letter of support I received today from a former councilman from District Six, Josh Cohen. He said, "When discussing land use," he says, "debates require the council to choose between two competing priorities: either protect the rights of a private owner, a property owner, to develop their properties, or preserve the character of a community. It's rare that a solution allows you to do both. Bill 620 does just that." And I will just ask for my colleagues' support this evening, and I look forward to hearing from the many supporters who are here this evening.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this bill?
Happy to. For the record, Pete Barron with the county exec. Joining me at the table is Mr. Kai Ziegler and Ms. Rhodes from Office of Planning and Zoning, and from Office of Law, Mr. Swain. I have had extensive conversations with the sponsor on this bill, as well as the county exec. As many of you may or may not be aware, the county exec's a farmer and has tremendous respect and understanding for the folks that do the hard work of growing our food and the folks who work in the water and get us those delicious crabs. In fact, the work that is, that they do is frankly a lot harder than the work that a suit like me does. And the county executive and I had a long conversation about why this bill is necessary, why it's important. As I understand it, there might be an amendment coming that will address some of the technical concerns the administration has in making sure that we are able to enforce it in the correct way. But the administration supports this bill and the intent of the sponsor and the folks behind me in the audience who do this work every day and need the support of the code to back up and protect the important work that they do. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, and I look forward to discussing the amendment and anything further.
Ms. Fiedler?
Oh.
Okay. I don't have any questions from my colleagues. We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do have several pages of folks, so I'm going to call, I'm going to call up six individuals at a time. Please, when you're, come up, you're going to state your name and your address for the record, and you'll have two minutes, and I will move everyone along when that bell rings, okay? And I'm going to try really hard to decipher handwriting. Mary Ann Zaruba, Alina Gilden, Barry Gilden, Matthew Partoud, Susan Hansen Hazen, and Mr. Paul Rose. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. As you all get seated, you'll see there's a, there's a little clock in front of you. You'll be able to watch your time a little bit. Ms., is it Zaruba? Did I get it right?
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Zaruba, and I live about four doors down from the watermen. Lived there for some time, and they have been very respectful. I believe that the hard work that they do is something that is culturally important to our area, and feel remiss that even the maritime museums have chased them out of those areas, the save the bay, safe areas are not hospitable to even them. They've been good neighbors, and I believe in the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Alina Gilden?
I support this bill because it is the right thing to do. They are honest, hardworking people who are providing for their families. They are part of Maryland's heritage and part of Whitehall Beach's character. And diversity is what our community is all about.
Thank you. Mr. Barry Gilden?
Barry Gilden, 1770 Beechfield Road, about 150 foot from the property. I support this bill, it will carry on the character of our neighborhood. We moved there in 1971. Across the street from us was Henry Norman, who was a charter boat captain. 150 down the street was Bob Marsh's Boatyard. Self-service, you, people that you work on, he puts it back in the water. At night, when he didn't have anybody to help him, he'd come up the street and get me or Henry Norman. We'd go down and help him. The crabmen had been down there. I've seen oysters, crabbers, clambers down there. All of them have gone by the wayside. However, when we came to the time that we no longer saw clamming down there, no longer saw oysterin down there, all the heavy equipment left. And all we had was a crabbing situation, a clean crabbing situation. And it's all part of this community that we have lived with since 1971. And I can remember back to 1960, since I was born in Annapolis, running in that area. It's always been back there since then. If you go back in history of Annapolis, good act of the water dock, we used to see the crabbers, the oystermen down there. They're gone, chased out by people who wanted to build something big. Something big, the crabbers have to go. I think we have to preserve a certain location for crabbers, and that also includes Mill Creek, Pasadena, and Deal. All of these areas are where these crabbers are coming out of, and we need to keep them going. In Mill Creek, right around the corner, is another small marina, like the one we have. In Mill Creek, three other crabbing situations down there. There's also, Cantler's also down there. Cantler Boys, which by the way, I think it was either 17 or 19 of them at one time that were all siblings. For those of you who don't know that, a large family. 19, okay. There's the answer. So I think in this community back here, we have to keep them there. Thank you.
Partovi. Matthew Partovi, 613 Trucks and Road, Annapolis. Good evening, council members. Like I said, my name is Matthew Partovi. I'm a lifelong resident of Anterol County and a member of the Annapolis community. As a manager of a large restaurant in the city of Annapolis, I'm here tonight in support of Bill 620. As a member of our community, I recognize how important local seafood is to our commerce and to the charm of our fair city. I believe it is imperative that we do all that we can to protect our local watermen and the lifestyles and traditions that these hard-working men and women have established for generations. Unfortunately, the phrase "from the bay to the table" isn't magic. It's the product of backbreaking labor. Our community is blessed with small business owners who are willing to wake up before the sun shines and perform this backbreaking grind. We appreciate their contribution to our table and to our community. These are the reasons that I believe their way of life should be protected, must be protected. I thank the council members for spending the time here today. I know that you'll do what's right for the community by passing this necessary and important bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Hazen?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Fiedler, for introducing this legislation and for making it a priority. As you're hearing, it's of great importance to this community, and I know when you canvass the community, you've heard this as an issue many, many times. The council will hear through the course of this hearing from many residents about why they strongly support this bill, and hear about the economic importance of keeping the watermen in the county. And you'll hear more about the cultural significance of their presence, as well as the heritage of this community. And I'm not going to go into details on those, because you'll hear more than you'll hear. What I'd like to say here is that, and I think somebody said this earlier, there comes a time when it becomes glaringly obvious what the right thing to do is. And the right thing to do is to pass this bill. This bill doesn't sanction any change to the land use or community structure. It merely supports the status quo. There's no new land use or development associated with this bill. There is no increase in impervious surfaces. There are no additional environmental impacts. In short, this is the status quo for a use that has existed for over four decades. There's nothing new here. The bill simply acknowledges the right of these men and women to work in this county and to support this county. What I do find to be very confusing about the opposition to this bill and the continued use of these properties is that a number of the people who are opposing the bills purchased the properties next to these areas with full knowledge of what these men and women do for a living. They, many of these people have requested and been granted variances for the properties that they have bought to increase the footprints of their properties. They've built taller and larger homes. They've clear-cut the lots. I say all this not to say that shouldn't have happened, but not one member of this wonderful community did anything to stop them.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Rose?
Paul Rose, 1880 Pleasant Plains Road, Whitehall Beach community. And I've lived there 30 years. The watermen have been there ever since I moved in, and they're good neighbors, and as are the people that have the small marina in our community and the farmers down the road that have the turf farm. All good neighbors. And I believe, I'm in favor of this bill, and the reason why I'm in favor of it is, it seems like everyone in the community wants a waterman there, except for somebody that just moved in, bought a property that was right next door, that they could see what was going on. And if they didn't want it to be going on there, then they should have bought a property somewhere else. somewhere else. So that's just how I feel about it, and that's it.
This panel is dismissed, and we'll call up the next six. Mr. Billy Crook, Mr. Pat Donahoe, Ellen Christensen, John Hazen, Michael Spiegel, and Brian Walton.
That's me.
State your name and address, and you have two minutes, sir.
Yeah, I'm William Crook. I live at 132 Bay Drive, Stevensville, Maryland, on Kent Island, so I'm not an Anarod County resident. I've been a crabber since 1975, and I've tied my boat up at the pier that we're talking about, Mike Spiegel's pier, since 1978. And all we're doing is making a living. We're trying to get by in the neighborhood, be good neighbors. We've never had a complaint until this person moved a couple of doors over and bought a waterman's house, tore it down, and built a McMansion. We'd never had any trouble. It's one person. The whole neighborhood's been behind us. And all I got to say is, we just want to do what we've been doing and not hurt anybody, and it's a good, safe port. It's safer than us having to drive all the way across the bay in a boat. Saves fuel, which is good for the environment, and we provide most of, you know, all our crabs really go to restaurants in Anarod County. I just happen to live on Kent Island in Queen Anne County, but, you know, we're a pretty big part of the county, and we just want to continue doing what we're doing, and we hope you all give us that chance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pat Donahoe?
My name is Pat Donahoe, 712 Red Cedar Road, Annapolis. I live across the street from the watermen's docks. Been there for 51 years. Never seen any traffic problems or any situations come up there that would cause anyone any concern. But what I want to say is, I watched the boys in the neighborhood work for the watermen from the time they were 15 and on. Some of them still work on the water. Maybe not across the street, but some of them do. My son was one. He started when he was 15. And the thing that the watermen taught them, they learned a lot, but the thing that watermen taught them more than anything else was a good work ethic, which all the young men, who are now probably in their 50s, still have. That's why I support the watermen.
Thank you. Ellen Christensen?
My name is Ellen Christensen. I live at 751 Whitehall Beach Road. I'm a transplant from New York, but have lived for 48 years in the community of Whitehall Beach. When we first moved down here, we had, the whole waterfront was all watermen. And as the years progressed, and they died off, and people bought, you know, the properties, the new people basically acclimated themselves to the community. And, you know, they're accepting of everything. You know, we have no covenants in our community, which is great, which I like, you know. And the watermen have been there. They've been very, they break their backs trying to put food on the table, deliver it to restaurants, and to make a living. I support the bill that Ms. Fiedler has introduced.
Thank you. Mr. Josh Hazen?
Hi, my name's Josh Hazen, 518 Chester River Beach Road. Thank you for holding this meeting and giving the community the opportunity to tell you how they feel about this bill and the reasons that they support it. I know that Councilwoman Fiedler has walked this community, engaged with its residents. From them, she heard firsthand how much the community supports the continued presence of the watermen in our county and at the Minno Creek location. By passing this bill, you can provide regulatory certainty for all of us working men and women across the county, and allow us to continue to provide the economic support to our restaurants and our county that has become a staple of the tourist economy. Throughout this effort, through an administrative hearing, office hearing, and through 10 hearings before the county board of appeals, the one resident who has challenged the watermen's right to work from this property has frequently said that the best way to address this issue is through the legislative process. These statements can be found in the transcripts of all those hearings. So here we are now, and you have the opportunity to bring this issue to closure, not only for our location, but also for similar locations in the county. By supporting this bill, you have a positive impact on the county in a number of ways. First, you will ensure a continued supply of fresh seafood to our restaurants. I know that each of you appreciates the importance of our tourist trade and the role that local seafood plays in that trade. If the watermen can't work and dock in this county, they will likely have to sell elsewhere. It would be a travesty for this council to value the role that seafood plays in our economy, but to say that the men and women who provide them aren't allowed to work in this county. Second, you will be supporting the continuation of one of Maryland's oldest cultural traditions. The watermen represent Anarod County's heritage and are a valuable part of our history. Please do not drive us out of here so that we cannot be seen working in these local waters. And last but not least, if you support this bill, you will bring this issue to a close once and for all, and safeguard the ability of all watermen to continue their important work in this county. Over the past five years, all of us have been living in continued uncertainty. After the administrative hearing officer upheld our right to work from the property in Anarod County, we thought the battle was over. Then after appeal, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael Spiegel?
Yes, I'm Mike Spiegel. I live in Stevensville on Eastern Shore. I am a native Dan Arnold County. In 1984, I began my career as a waterman. From the very beginning, I struggled to find a place to dock my boat. There are limited opportunities for watermen in Anarod County. 20 years ago, I obtained a slip at the Waterman's Landing on Minno Creek. This location has been in operation for 60 years and is a perfect location to access crabbing and fishing grounds. Even the 2008 Maryland Working Waterfront Commission's final report recognized that the mouth of the Severn River at the Chesapeake Bay is a critical access point for watermen. If this bill passes, watermen will not be forced out of this county. Without local watermen, there's no local seafood. Please help keep the watermen in Anarod County. Please support Bill Number 620. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Walton?
My name's Brian Walton, and I live at 6005 Newton Road, Preston, Maryland. And I grew up in Whitehall Beach. I moved there in 1972, and I started working down at the pier when I was like 13, 14, going out in, you know, in the boats calling crabs and all. And so I just got, I fell in love with it, and been there ever since. So, you know, I learned a lot down there. I worked for three different guys, and bought a boat from Billy Crook, and I still got that boat. It's been down there, working down there for 45 years. It's been working. So I bought it like when I was 25 and took it over, and so that's how, you know, long that boat's been there. So, I mean, it's been, you know, the place has been down there a long time, and, you know, and it's supported me. I mean, you know, that's all I know to do in my life, and I do it out of there, because I know that crabbing area, and, you know, crab pot, and that's where you do it. You know, I've got a lot invested in crab pots, you know, I run 400 pots by myself, and, you know, that's almost $18,000 worth of pots, so, you know, we need to work out of there because that's where you go crab-potting. And, you know, some guys go troutlining up in the rivers, you know, and you can't crab-pot up in the rivers, so, you know, that's where we go. And, you know, and it's a good place to have, for watermen to harbor, you know, when they want to go oystering or something, you know, because it just changes, different parts of the bay, you know, you work different parts of the bay, and sometimes you catch the stuff that are better than other places. So other watermen might need to tie up there too, because, you know, if it blows or you get a storm, it's good to have something close by, you know, you don't want to, you're running all over the place. So I support the bill, and we need it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. This panel is dismissed, and I'll call up the next six. And again, I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Bill Serbo, Randy Sharon, Sue Snyder, Kurt Vineyard, Suzanne Elliott Suter, Scott Vineyard.
My name is Bill Serbo. I'm from 1252 West River Road in Shadyside, Maryland. We have the same issue in the southern part of the county as you're hearing here tonight. It's funny, I was here 20 years ago, working on this waterman home commercial use, back when we had the small area plan. And as good as we could get was conditional use for a waterman to use their own house to work out of. That's as best the county would give us, and we were basically treated as second-class citizens then. I'm glad to see that the county and Ms. Fiedler has decided to help the watermen out. The other half of living in the county is having a place to tie your boat up, and if you don't have a place to tie your boat up, you're pretty much out of business. You can go to Port Annapolis Marina, you can go to Harches and Galesville, you can go to any of the Harrington Harbor or any other commercial marina in the southern part of the county. You won't see a workboat. The reason why is because we've always had operations in the county that didn't fit the code, but it's the way it has always been done. And with the age of, the average age of watermen in the state is north of 62 years old now. So it's not a growth industry, and we definitely need this bill to be passed. It's very important for the county. It's very important for the businesses in this county. It's very important for the citizens that depend on fresh seafood and actually are spoiled to have fresh, cheap seafood. We don't want to be having to buy stuff out of Virginia or North Carolina if we can help it. So please, pass this bill. Thank you.
Randy Sharon?
My name is Randy Sharon. I live along Bog and Creek. I retired from the Natural Resources Police in 2014, and during that time, most of my career was spent in Anarod County. And all during my career, there was numerous boats tied up at Ben Bowen's place when it was Ben Bowen's, and then when Mike Spiegel bought the property. And I can never remember a complaint being generated because his workboats were there. And I support the bill. It's only right that those men have been there so long that they continue what they're doing.
Thank you. Sue Snyder?
Thank you for hearing us. I'm Sue Snyder, and I live at 708 Red Cedar Road, which is across the street and two houses up from the boatmen, from the watermen. And I've lived there since 1989, over 30 years. I can tell you that as a small business owner, I'm concerned about the business precedent of pushing our watermen away. Those men work harder than anybody I know, and if they move, they also are likely to take with them our crabs for our restaurants. We have lots of restaurants that depend on the people right across the street. Some of the restaurants include The Point, Annapolis Seafood, Donnelly's, Dave the Crab Guy, and lots of others. And that's going to go away if they aren't able to perform. And the other thing is, I am a resident of this neighborhood. These men drive past me every time they go in and out. I have never had a complaint. Traffic is not a problem. And what bothers me personally and saddens me, last year when I was here, I was saddened. Now I'm actually maddened that we're here, have to be here again, and I hope that we can end it with this. But this community that I live in, I love. It is a diverse group of people who really care for one another. These people around this table are not just my neighbors, they're my friends, and they're people who care for one another. And the actions against the watermen have threatened our community values and torn at the fabric of our supportive community. And there are lots more people that are back home, being with their kids tonight, who would like to be here as well. But I ask you to support this bill. And I'd love to say one last thing. I was so struck as we were doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please summarize.
Yes, as we were doing the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, where we said "and justice for all." And I ask you to support this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt Vineyard?
Madam Chairman, members of the county council, and thank you, Councilwoman Fiedler, for introducing this bill. I live at 720 Red Cedar Road, and I've been there for two and a half years. I am directly across the street from Mike Spiegel's Waterman's Landing. And part of the reason that my family chose to purchase the home we did and actually offer more than asking price was their presence. It adds an element of authenticity to our community, and to strip it away would be wrong on all levels. When we first moved in, within a week of us being there, Mike walked across the street. He knocked on our yard, our door. He introduced himself, and he said, "I run the operation across the street. If you ever have any issues with us, if we're ever making too much noise, if we're ever causing problems with traffic and parking, please let me know, and I will address it." And I will tell you that after two and a half years, there has not been a single incident. I want to echo something that my neighbor Sue said, and that is the impact that this can have on small business in our community. These watermen are small businessmen. They provide their produce to small business owners. If we force them away, we are sending a very, very strong, very powerful negative signal to all small businessmen in our community. And then lastly, and I think this is the elephant in the room, and that is, this is fundamentally an issue of right and wrong. If someone with deep pockets can move into a community and fundamentally disrupt the very fabric of the community, change the way of life that's been in place for in excess of 50 years just because they don't like something, is wrong. And I'm going to quote something that's often attributed to Edmund Burke, which is, "All that is required for evil to prevail is for good men and women to do nothing." Tonight, you have a chance to do something good and to plant a flag in the ground and say, "No more. No more of putting this man through what he's been put through. I'm going to take care of his wife, who's obviously ill."
Thank you, sir. Suzanne Elliott Suter?
Suzanne Elliott Smith, 720 Red Cedar Road.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much for hearing us. I had prepared statements, and I'm going to do away with them because I don't think I can say it better than some of these people have already tonight. Here's what I would like to say to you. This has gone on too long. This is extremely stressful for this community. But beyond that, there's just, there are levels of smearing that are going on that are just uncalled for. These people are very, very decent people. My husband and I live directly across the street. They are our few. They're decent, hardworking people. It is also a massive financial burden. This thing has run almost $100,000. I don't know how many crabs you have to sell to defend yourself, $100,000. But my request here tonight is make this stop tonight. Enough. They can't keep financially doing this. Our deep pockets do win. So I am counting on all of you, because I know you know what's right. I know you're going to hear these people speak very eloquently. I know you're going to care about who they are and what their livelihood is. Could you please make this stop tonight and be done with this? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Vineyard?
Scott Vineyard, 720 Red Cedar Road. I'm the son of Kurt and Suzanne right here. I don't have too much else to add that people haven't already said. I very clearly, by my support, by my being here, agree with what everyone said. But I just, I agree with my dad. We all have a chance right now, you have a chance right now to put a stop to this, to send a signal to other small-business owners, to other traditional communities, to other people who don't have the deep pockets, to just fight these fights and, you know, just can't get pushed around for years and years, that this cannot happen in Anarod County. And it also sends a signal to the people who are requiring us to be here by trying to push these laws and trying to push people out, that you can't do that either. It sends a signals to both parties. It sends a signals to the small-business owners, "We support you." And it sends a signals to the, to the big people with the deep pockets, "You can't push us around." That's all I have to say.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed and I'll call up the next and final six. Michael Donahoe, David Miller, Susan Hannan, Sandra Salvatore, John Zentgraf, and Don Mr. Donahoe, Donahoe?
Hi, Michael Donahoe, 104 Walnut Street, Centerville, Maryland. I would just like to address the council in regards to any public safety or quality-of-life concerns you may have. I grew up across the street from this location, and I retired from Anarod County Police Department in 2015, after 24-years. Per our CAD system, we've never had a call-for-service for any crime or quality-of-life concern at that location, not a speeding vehicle, not a loud-noise complaint, nothing. So the culture at this location is hard-working watermen that would do anything for you. So I'd like you to take that in consideration. Thank you.
Mr. David Miller?
Hello, my name is Daniel Miller. I'm the owner of, that's okay. I'm the owner of River Bay Roadhouse, which is a steak-and-crab house right here in Annapolis. And I've known Michael Spiegel for 50-plus-years, and he's been a waterman most of his life. And he's been very important to my restaurant, giving me crabs. He has great crabs. There, there's not many people better than him as far as watermen go. He's been very polite, he's always followed the rules. He's always, you know, done the stuff he's supposed to with his oysters, with his tags. And I've lived on Deep Creek for 20-plus-years, and I watched the skipjacks, it used to be parked right on my pier. And it's amazing to me that these people with money can push out people like, working-class people like that, and, and keep going to court over and over and over. I mean, how many times does this guy have to win? You know, he's spent pretty much his life savings on this. I know that, because I know him personally. All I can say is, everybody's said pretty much everything I want to say. I just think that it's not fair. You don't move next to an airport and tell the planes to leave. It's just not the way it works. When you live there, when you move there, you knew those boats were there. Same with the highway. You can't move on Route 50 and say, "The cars are driving me crazy." I mean, any moron knows that. But again, my name's Dan Miller, and I'm sorry for any comments that were not correct. But please support this bill and help this guy out, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Susan Hannan. I live at 717 Red Cedar Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm a 35-year-resident of Anarod County. I'm opposed to Bill 620 as it is proposed, and my reasons are as follows. The bill is ambiguous and has deficiencies. Bill 620 should not retroactively allow a use that was not lawful in January of 1990, in particular if a property owner had a commercial waterman's use in 1990 that not, did not specifically allow slip rentals or marina activity, then the current property owner should not be able to rent slips and conduct marina activity. The use provided by 620 should be restricted to what was lawfully existed in 1990. Bill 620 should continue to provide safeguards and protections that were forwarded to neighboring residential property owners when Waterman's Home Commercial Use Code was presented and passed. Bill 620 proposes to allow non-residents to operate the commercial use in residential districts. As proposed, this bill does not specifically require commercial licenses. Even residents who are not watermen can operate a commercial use, and this can result with any, in one with a pier starting a commercial use and renting slips, which is contradictory to other sections of the county zoning code. This bill is a single-shot legislation, which does not meet the state code land use article that provides that zoning legislation now must be consistent with the county's general development plan. The property that everyone here is speaking about is a residence, it's not a marina, and Ms. Fiedler even told me that in an email, that it's not a marina. And as such, it should be restricted to County Code 182404, which restricts private peers to four vessels. And I'm concerned that this county, this council, or this bill does not provide any monitoring or policing activities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sandra Salvatore?
Can you hear me okay? Sandra Salvatore, I'm at 721 Red Cedar Road. I'm in the property directly next door to Spiegel's. And the Hannans are to my right, they're a couple doors down. We've owned that property for 42-years. And when we bought that property, my family bought that property, we actually knew it was a waterman's, waterman worked out of that property. And caveat emptor applies in Maryland still, and we knew. And we liked that fact, actually. That was part of the character and the integrity. But as the years have gone by, we got to know the people that worked out of there, and it's so much of a part of our heritage, it's a part of our culture. When you walk into BWI, even just around the corner here, this Whitehall Gallery, crab signs and waterman signs, Annapolis Magazine will have a cover of watermen. This bill, voting for this bill means that you support our culture and our heritage, and you don't allow pernicious behavior to occur. The Hannans bought this property knowing that there were watermen there. They filed complaints against it, trying to, they're trying to do a legal game. And you're, you know, a lot of us are working hard, and we try to do the right thing. And there have been previous hearings over the last year and a half, which have gone the way of the watermen. And to rectify the points that Mrs. Hannan has been bringing up, making them legal. And I appreciate the opportunity to try to put a flag in the sand and say, "Enough is enough." I have, myself, spent 30-hours-plus taking time off of work to try to defend a going concern that's been there for 50-some-odd-years. And these guys will give, they'll, they'll give their shirt off their back for you, unlike some people. And they will do their best, and they've never had a complaint. And I'd be the one person in the position to file a complaint if there was one, and I've never done that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. John Zentgraf?
John Zentgraf, 696 Black Forest Road. I grew up in the neighborhood, I've been there since 1962, give or take. There's always been an operation there. They're good people, it's like a family. One day, there was a whale out in the bay. Billy Crook took me out to see the whale. You know, my uncle got stuck on a sandbar. Mike Strite pulled him off. You know, if you're out there and you don't have a cellphone and something happens, these guys are coming in and out. They will stop, they will help you. They're, it's a family. They're just, it's a tradition, they're great people, and I support the bill 100%.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Don Hoover?
Don Hoover, 737 Dogwood Lane, Annapolis. We moved into the neighborhood 80, or 80, in 1988, 30-years ago. And when I moved in, I had four young teenagers that, we turned loose and let them run around the neighborhood. They went and met the watermen, they met the people in the neighborhood. And today, they all spend time on the water, and they respect the bay, they respect the water, they respect the creatures that live in the water, and the, those that, that live around the water. That's due to the watermen. They've taught them, they've, how many times they've told me what Mike told them, or what Larry told them, or Joe told them, somebody told them that was on the water. My youngest son actually runs a business where he spends a lot of time on the water, working with boats and shrink-wrapping boats. And every time he does, he has a crew out there with him, he says, "Hey, pick that stuff up, clean that stuff up." They walk away with more trash they took out of the water than what they brought down there to do the work. And that's because the watermen taught them to guard it and appreciate it. And we appreciate everything they've taught them, and being in the neighborhood, being part of our neighborhood and part of our heritage. I support the bill fully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those are the, this panel is now dismissed. Those are the final folks that I have signed up. If there's anybody who did not sign up who wishes to speak, please come forward now, take a seat, and we'll...
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Tom.
Anti, I work at Cantler's as a seafood manager and buyer. I've been there for 15-years, I'm 32, I've worked there since I was 15, 16, 17-years-old. My job is to ensure that the restaurant has fresh crabs and seafood to meet the demands of our customers. During the crabbing season, we see thousands of tourists each year coming through our doors and expressing fresh, local crabs. My source of those local crabs are the local watermen behind us from Anarod County. I buy from Billy, Nick, Josh, Spiegel, Brian Walden, a bunch of other people that go out of there. This allows me to truthfully say that our crabs are fresh, and that they're local, and they're delivered daily from the waters right outside of our doors. If there's no place in Anarod County for these watermen to call home base, they'll sell their catch elsewhere, and then I'll have no access to crabs that the tourists want. If these guys are forced to leave, why would they cross the Bay Bridge to sell to me when they could just sell on the other side of the shore? If you've tried to cross the Bay Bridge recently, you would definitely know that that's true. If they are forced to leave, what do I tell my customers? Do I tell them they're caught right here in Anarod County, or do I tell them that they're brought in from other counties because we don't want any of our watermen working out of our home bases? I support this bill because it will ensure that the crabs that have been the staple of Anarod County seafood restaurants will continue to support our strong tourist economy. Please don't jeopardize their livelihood and the restaurant economy in our county. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Oh, we're going to go right down the line here, sorry.
You want to pick up Ms. Johnson first, or?
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
She likes to go last.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. My name's Sager Williams. I'm an attorney with offices in Annapolis, and I've been working with the watermen for about five-years now, through the Board of Appeals. I've heard from a former member of the board here earlier this evening, through, first at the Hearing Office of Board of Appeals, Circuit Court, and now there's been an appeal filed with the Court of Special Appeals. I'd like to stop working for them. I'd like to, I'd like for the council to decide this issue by passing the legislation. Someone mentioned earlier that the Hannans had often talked about their big problem with the operation is it's illegal, and I think you heard Ms. Hannan harp on that. Well, this is a way to make it legal. And if that's their big problem, we can solve it tonight. I want to...
Thank you.
I want to provide the council with an excerpt from the Maryland Working Waterfront Commission, which you heard mentioned earlier. And I'd ask each of you, when you have a chance, take a look at the last two pages in the excerpt. The most important, at least in my view, the most important recommendation that the commission made is that because local government has zoning power in Maryland, local governments need to take action to preserve our working waterfronts. They are, they are rapidly disappearing, even, and this is in 2008 when this recommendation was made, and unfortunately, very little has happened. But preserving our worker, working waterfronts is a, is a vital importance, and I say that as a resident of Anarod County since I was three-years-old, which is six years, seven years ago. The other thing I want to say is, I've heard that the administration's position, if I can just sum up.
Summarize, please.
And, and I understand they, they have views that there are technical things that may need to be taken care of, but they can be taken care of in a follow-up piece of legislation. I think...
Thank you, sir.
We need a vote tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Plot?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the council, David Plot, and I am the attorney for Dan and Susan Hannan. I want to set some things straight on the record. First, the Hannans did not file the zoning complaint that started it. It was another waterfront neighbor who filed that complaint, and there are other neighbors who also object to the issue. Madam Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Could you save me a little time there that I lost in that? The fact is that Ms. Leavitt and Mr. Spiegel could perfectly operate legally on this property and have a waterman's home operation. They can do that. The law provides for that, there are 10 conditions to the use, but they decided they didn't want to do that. They want to run out slips, which was prohibited in this, on this property, back to the 1980s. Mr. Sager Williams was actually on the case for planning and zoning. It's, it's never been illegal, it was ignored, and continued the operation. What's happening here, is that, right, this is in litigation, and it was remanded by Judge Crooks back down to the Board of Appeals in terms of how many slips should be allowed. It's been litigation. Ms. Lacy, what you said about, "We're being asked to wear the red robes," exactly. This county council is going to become the Court of Appeals, the Court of Last Resort, and a neighborhood zoning dispute, that if people are not satisfied during the administrative and litigation process, they're going to come to you to pass legislation to declare who wins and who loses. I don't think you really want to put yourself in that position. The fact is, the judicial process is proceeding, and if you feel there are other legislative solutions, I would agree. Queen Anne's County has a waterman's marina. Perhaps that's one of the solutions that this county should have, to provide like Queen Anne's County, a place for watermen to be able to dock. But to be able to take over the case and basically declare winners and losers in the process of litigation is just, just not right. The other thing I'd like to say is, the bill is poorly drafted, it's ambiguous, and unlike the waterman's home commercial use where you have 10 conditions to protect the neighbors, here you have no conditions.
Please summarize. We need, we need to keep calm, and the chambers are all, we can clear the chambers, or we can proceed respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Please summarize, so.
In summary, I would ask that you defeat this legislation. It's making you the Court of Appeals, which is not the position I think you want to be in, and enact legislation to provide other means for the watermen to be accommodated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Hannan. I live at 717 Red Cedar Road. I'm opposed to Bill 6-20 as it's proposed. Bill 620, if passed, must provide direction to the Office of Planning and Zoning and how the proposed bill shall be measured and enforced. The bill currently states that it shall be governed by what existed in 1990. The only factual documents in existence in 1990 for 725 Red Cedar Road was non-conforming use 16-78 in Board of Appeals 90-78, both authored by Mr. Williams. Both documents limited mooring of vessels at the property to the property owner only. How Bill 20 could weave the notion that up to nine vessels could be permitted is beyond comprehension. Bill 620 did not provide any zoning protection or restrictions to protect neighboring residential property owners. Instead, it is designed to permit an intensification of use and all of its accompanying issues. If the county members allow this bill to pass, one can only assume other groups not satisfied with its non-conforming use will show up at council's doorstep tomorrow morning, requesting their own legislation to settle zoning disputes. Bill 620 is inconsistent with other sections of the county code, including 16, or excuse me, 18-2404, which limits private peers to four vessels belonging to the owner or occupant of the property. The subject property near our home is a private resident with a pier in a residential district. It is not a marina, commercial, or otherwise. Waterman properties in residential districts shall not have, have, shall not have rights and privileges that are not afforded to all neighboring residential property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
My name is Christine West. I live at 1827 Hidden Point Road. I support this bill, and I encourage you to vote in favor of it. I want to do anything to protect the watermen and our culture, our legacy, and our history in Anaronda County. And I am worried that if we harass the watermen and don't support them, we whitewash our history, our culture, and we turn into a town like any other town in America that's -- people come here for the seafood and the culture, and if those kinds of things are gone, we whitewash our county into something really boring, and why bother coming here? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I do support this bill. I do support the watermen. I do support their right to earn a living and to be a part of creating a community. And you've heard the testimony tonight. There is a community, and has been a community. And maybe I'm old, and I'm not an attorney, but you know, the Charter of 1632, signed by Charles II, said, "Every citizen shall have the right of fishing and navigation." Now, when they wrote navigation, they don't mean, oh, we go so far and we turn left. No, it's, you have the right to use boats, and you have the right to harvest the creatures that live within the waters. And we have not been good about protecting those rights. State Highway Administration comes in, builds a bridge, the waterfront property owners who have now converted the little modest home that was there, built in the 1930s, into some McMansion, and then that's not enough. They drive the neighbor crazy so they can buy her land, and then they really enlarge it. But, oh, we quickly post no trespass private property when that has always been access to the water for the people in the neighborhood. But no one in the neighborhood wants to fight. It's a problem that every -- it happens where there is money and power. People want to be the biggest house, the biggest boat, because you know the phrase, mine is bigger than yours, or whatever. I'm sorry if that's inappropriate. But there is this. I mean, you heard it -- you know what I'm talking about. We need to preserve those things that create a stable, loving, caring community, and we cannot allow these things to be destroyed willy-nilly because someone has come in with money and power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This panel is dismissed.
Madam Chair.
Oh. We've got to get through. This is a business meeting, folks.
Madam Chair, I did have questions for the panel if they could stay for a minute, particularly because we have the attorneys for both sides, so I had questions for them.
Okay.
I'll be quick, but I got questions. So, gentlemen, since I have Mr. Plot and Mr. Williams here, and you two represent, as I understand it, the two sides of this litigation, I guess my question would be this. I am sensitive to the facts as they come out from your side, Mr. Williams. I'm sensitive to the process arguments as it comes out from Mr. Plot's side, and what this could do going forward. My question to you would be, where are you all in litigation currently?
Current...
Either of you can answer.
Okay, so basically, there was an argument before Judge Crooks on the merits of the case, and he did a somewhat split decision. He affirmed the variances they were asking from the waterman's home commercial use. He found in favor of that, but he found there was not substantial evidence as to what the Board of Appeals stated, that they could not have more than seven non-resident watermen vessels operating. So he did a remand to that. We had discussions.
So he affirmed in part...
Right, and then there was an appeal to the Court of Special Appeals.
So is that where you're sitting now?
And that's where we're sitting.
Appeal to Court of Specials. Have either of you engaged in the ADR process that's allowed by the Court of Special Appeals?
I've requested that in the information report, Mr. Plot.
Are the watermen willing to engage in the ADR process in the Court of Special Appeals?
I haven't discussed it with them.
How long have you all been in front of the Court of Special Appeals in terms of the appeal?
10 days, 15.
Okay, so it's relatively new.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess the reason I'm asking this is because while I completely understand, Mr. Williams, the position that your clients are in, and frankly, that everyone in this room is in, and I'm very sensitive to these arguments, and we can go down a litany of factors for why, I also worry about this idea of trying to come into the council and making us the Court of Appeals or Court of Special Appeals going forward. If you want to address that argument, I'd be interested to hear from you.
Thank you. I would.
Certainly.
Because that's not what we're asking the council to do. We're just asking the council to exercise their legislative prerogative and adopt some legislation that would fix a problem.
If we adopt this legislation, will it end the litigation?
It would end that litigation.
Right, so it's effective.
For my clients, anyway. I don't know what they may want to do, but...
Okay, got it.
You know, this happens a lot. The council needs things to bring, you know, things like this happen to bring issues to the council's attention. I've been -- I started my career as a planner for Anaronda County, as you heard a minute ago, and practiced law now for about 25 years, and I have seen dozens and dozens of times where there are zoning disputes that end up in front of the council, not to resolve the dispute, but to make a decision in your legislative judgment what the law should be. And that's all we're asking.
And I agree with you. It's happened. I mean, we did it last year with the Atkinson Times, however many cases that were in front of us with the health benefits. Ms. Schuet and I were talking earlier about the Haley Commons case, which was around forever, I believe, and, you know, dealt with impact fees. So I agree with you. This has been done before. I guess I'm just trying -- those have typically been bigger county-wide issues. They've not been necessarily getting involved in private litigation that's involved two neighbors or litigants, whereas these have often been county-wide problems with benefits or with impact fees collected by the county or something like that.
Well, I think this could be -- I mean, this is a county-wide problem. You heard some folks from South County, and I think they said there are similar situations there.
And are they in the middle of litigation, to your knowledge? Because I know from...
Not that I know of.
The blue letter indicates there are seven parcels in the entire county that I think would be affected by this legislation.
Right. No other litigation I'm aware of, no other complaints against those seven or those six, if we're one of the seven.
All right.
And, you know, and I think that's the point, is this operation has gone on, as you heard, for many, many years. It's never bothered anyone. In fact, it's actually been embraced by the community.
It's absolutely embraced by the community.
That was apparent. Right. And so, all this, all the bill would do is let them stay, just as is. It's not asking to any change in what you heard earlier from Councilmember Fiedler's correct, the critical area laws, zoning setbacks, pier length requirements. All of those would prevent any expansion. What you see is what you get. In fact, what you see for the last 30 years is what you get. It's going to stay the same.
So, before you go, Mr. Plot, I see you want to add something. I guess this would be my question to you. We had a similar circumstance like this where impasse came in front of us with the detention officers last year, and we were asked to arbitrate a decision between a union bargaining unit and the county as to how to deal with their pay and benefit structure. And we had to deal with that, where we made that call. My question would be, one of the things we'd said to them, or at least I'd said to them, I don't know that others felt this way, was why don't the two sides go back and see if you all can work something out between the two of you prior to making us do it? And ultimately, I guess that would be my question to you all, because I'm questioning why you're bringing this in front of us to make the decision when, as I understood it, there may have been settlement talks at some point that have broken down. I don't know where exactly you are, and I'm curious to know about that.
The Hannans have made settlement offers several times, but those offers don't go anywhere near recognizing the way the use has been operating for 30 years. And, you know...
Has there been any mediation or arbitration between the parties in this entire litigation?
Madam Chair?
No.
If I may?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
I just want to be clear that this was not brought to us, as was stated in previous testimony. When I was knocking on doors in the community in 2017 and then following up in 2018, I saw what was happening. I heard what was brewing. I wrote an op-ed about it in the newspaper. So this has been on my radar for two years, and unfortunately, it just took this amount of time to get to this point. So this was my bill. I introduced this. I would have introduced this if five people in the audience came to me instead of lawyers. So I just want to be clear that I'm asking for this body to correct a zoning inconsistency that has allowed this to transpire. That's all.
Ms. Radveen?
You know what? I'll actually...
Oh, okay.
If I may, Mr. Volkey...
I'll allow Mr. Plot to be curious.
It's quite clear that this bill would not exist but for Ms. Fiedler's district in Menno Creek Marina. It's totally related to an ongoing litigation, and the purpose is to terminate the litigation. And talking about, somebody referenced Justice for All, which is not just the majority, but also the people who are in the minority. And here, you're going to terminate those rights of the people who are in the minority. It's going to be you are ultimately going to be wearing the red robes and making a decision to terminate this ongoing litigation. So I think that's wrong, and it's not due process, and it's not fair.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
We agree with the settlement.
Thank you, sir. We've already gone beyond our two-minute testimony per person. This panel is dismissed, and I'll do a final last call if anybody -- and then we're going to close the public hearing. Seeing no movement in the audience, okay. This is the absolute last call. Name and address, please, in two minutes.
All right. My name is James Thomas. I live at 107 Woodman School, Creesville, Maryland. I have worked out of the marina on Mike's boat. I've worked on Billy's boat, worked on Nick's boat, worked on many boats in and out of that marina. The gentleman sitting up here spoke about a workboat marina over here. We have one over there. It's already phasing us out. Eventually, we'll be phased out of there. They're pushing us out of there as fast as they can by bringing recreational boats and non-commercial boats in there and driving us out of there. So his idea is not going to solve your problem. This marina is also a valuable resource for people like me who live on the eastern shore that will move around depending upon where the resource that I'm going after will allow me to be at a place where I can safely travel. I support this bill, and I hope that you guys do as well, because this is a means of all of us making a living, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The public... We've got to move forward, guys. The public hearing on Bill Number 620 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 620.
Bill Number 620, Anordnance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts' Waterman's Commercial Use.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm a little hungry.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of discussion about Bill 520 and 620 over the last 48, 72 hours. It seems like it's been quite a whirlwind. So I just wanted to clarify, while resolutions -- amendments have been discussed on both bills, I am not introducing an amendment this evening on Bill 620.
The administration's comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair? Yes, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some concerns were -- have been raised about whether, if we were to pass this bill or not, either way, what would be the effect or impact, if any, on the GDP and regional area plan process?
I think I can answer that. I don't see it having any impact on that at all.
In what way? We're still -- the community is talking about a use that's been in their specific area for decades, but we're talking about a regional area plan. I mean, I don't know what the scope of that plan would include, but are we overall expecting to say in our GDP and then carry out through our regional area plan that we value waterman's use and waterman's home commercial use, and both of those uses should continue, or...
I'm sorry. Rephrasing a question, help. And I would say that I think, yes, of course, with the GDP and the region plans, where we have agriculture activities, waterman's activities, they're an important component of the local culture and industry, so we will certainly be looking at those things to protect and enhance them any way we can, in the sense that this is a very site-specific issue. It's probably not appropriate with a global Anaronda County GDP general development plan, but as we get into the region plans, it's probably more applicable.
So then, if we were to pass the bill tonight, then we probably, I mean, there's no -- is there any other plan that would kind of come between now with this bill and the regional area plan that will go directly to that area? When we get there? It's a year and a half, probably, before we get there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Puski.
Again, just real quick, because I think that this is something that all of us are going to have to deal with very shortly, or Mr. Kai Ziegler, I know you haven't been through GDP in Anaronda, and I wasn't in an elected position. I've been on several boards. But what will happen is you will find, as the general development plan rolls out, there are nonconforming uses and there are zoning laws that need to be clarified. And that's how the process works. And to remind everyone, the general development plan is a plan. It is not the code. There's a big difference. And things like this do come up, where the council does have to make a decision, right or wrong, where we're going to have to make some tough decisions in certain areas. I already know, just to give an example, as a record, I have a gas station in my district that's nonconforming. It's been there for 65 years and has to be addressed as a part of the general development plan. These things, again, come up, but we will have to make these decisions. I understand, and I respect the points that were brought up in regards to litigation, but there will be many votes that will come along, either during, before, and after that. So it's a part of the process. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll be very brief. I think sometimes it takes a situation to raise an issue to us, but certainly, I believe that this bill will have a preservation effect beyond just this specific instance. Certainly, we did hear some testimony tonight about the reach down into South County, and I do think that the preservation of that particular heritage is important on a countywide basis.
Ms. Radveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of comments from those who testified mentioned that this would be sort of settling just a single dispute, and I really don't see it that way. I actually see that this legislation serves a very important public policy. This is part of our state's heritage. This is part of our cultural tradition. Property value, especially on the waterfront, at this point is extremely high. Our economy in Maryland, and especially in Anaronda County, and especially in District Five, in the district that we've been discussing mainly tonight, but in my district and some of the other districts as well, are very dependent on the work that the watermen do. I'm also extremely compelled by the testimony. It's funny to be thinking so much about seafood. I'm generally a vegetarian, but I actually make exceptions for delicious local seafood. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who waited so long to testify. Thank you for providing a wonderful history lesson. I'm kind of wanting to move to your neighborhood. It sounds amazing. At least, I'd like to come visit. And with regard to the slips, again, when there's very little waterfront property available, I don't know how someone, you know, my impression of watermen is that they're generally working-class people. They're not wealthy, wealthy people. And so the availability of the funds to purchase a big waterfront property and set up a new operation, I think, is not very feasible. So allowing the existing properties that are already in place to continue operation to sort of save this for our county, which really does rely on the work that these, you know, that the watermen do. So I intend on supporting this, and I really appreciate the job that everyone has done tonight, educating me on the history of your community and the history of this profession, especially here in our county. So thank you.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add, I agree with Councilwoman Harris' comment about the countywide impact of this bill. And I actually, I don't think that this bill is similar to 5-20 in that I don't think we're actually being asked to wear the robes and be the Court of Appeals. We're actually purely being asked to legislate about a use, a land use matter, which is 100% within our wheelhouse. That is what we do. And in fact, the Court of Special Appeals and the Court of Special Appeals... And in fact, the Court of Special Appeals and the Court of Appeals wouldn't be able to change that unless they had some legislative, you know, indication from us that they could then use to rule on. And so, I actually think it's completely consistent between that bill and this bill to support both. We are talking about countywide impact, but it's always, almost always going to be that there's some kernel of some specific example that we're building our legislation from. And whatever happens with your ongoing litigation, I hope you all resolve it as soon as possible. But I'm happy to exercise legislative authority here and do what council members do, support the bill.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to explain my vote, because this is the time to do it. I'll be supporting this legislation, but I want to give some caveats to it. I was asking the question to the attorneys, because I don't like that we're sitting here in what I do perceive as us wearing the red robes. I do believe that this is what I will call a knockout blow to the litigation. I'm sorry that Mr. Spiegel and his wife have had to spend $100,000 to litigate this case. I grew up in a community where we had to fight the marina down the street and the big deep-pocketed marina owner who was from Rockville down here in little old Pasadena, and they were building something, and the community would scrimp and save and get money together, and we would sue, and we'd win, and we'd enforce covenants, and then we'd turn around, and we would see the exact same situation, they were pushing the envelope, trying to go. I'm sympathetic to what it's like to grow up in a waterfront community and see what the community was like and see people come in and try to change it. But I'll also say this. I went to law school for a reason, which is that we have laws, and I think that there are processes that we have to go through, and I apologize if they're so expensive. I do it every day, and I know how expensive it is. That's why I was asking the questions about settlement, because when parties can find a settlement, I prefer to see them do that. That being said, the arguments that have been made factually in this case are compelling. I read the entire Board of Appeals decision from 2017 and the fact finding that the Board of Appeals did. The fact that these were slips that you all were paying for from 1985 approximately until 2015, when Mr. Spiegel bought the marina, it was advertised that there was slip rental there. No one corrected the record on that. The real estate person indicated that was a fact. You all paid the county. The county never gave you that money back for the slip money. They never kicked that back to you. So the facts of your case are compelling to me, but I also want to be clear. I don't want to see every single situation where people dislike what happens at the Board of Appeals and feel it's unjust or inequitable coming in front of us for a legislative fix. So I want to put that on the record from my perspective, because if it comes in front of us again, I will have to examine it with fresh eyes. I think that the injustice that's been done in many ways to you all and to the history of your use in this property and the fact that you've been there since before we even had zoning laws in this county. So, I mean, to come in and say that you can't use it for that purpose, I think is just silly. It doesn't make sense. But I also think there's a process in place, and I think normally, it's supposed to be a process that finds truth and finds justice, and that's why we have litigation, so that people don't go out and shoot each other. We found that wasn't a really good way of resolving disputes, so we came up with courts and we created laws. So I'm sympathetic, as I said, to both sides. In this, if I have to make a choice, I'm more sympathetic to your side, because I think the facts are very compelling, but I also caution for any future situations where this is coming up. I'm not sure that I personally, this member of the council, will be quite as sympathetic or quite as moved. I'm putting that on the record now, just in case there are other situations that are looking at this, trying to see similar-type actions down the road. So again, I do support this. I will be voting for this, and again, I apologize that you all have been stuck in this for so, so many years. It is a terrible process, and I get it.
Do I even ask, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, good. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 620.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 620 is passed.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until March 2nd, 2020.